One more minute. Apple Park.
Yeah, I'm August the eighth, I'm at seven two thousand and eighteen. My name is Ann Trung. If you can call my name, you can call me Ann or A.T., whatever you want. I'm Mayor Pro Tem here. The mayor is not here tonight, so I will sit in here for his absence. Welcome all the citizen. I'm so excited to see a lot of people. Since I got elected for city council until now, this is the first time I see that many people show up in the chamber. I hope you don't make me nervous. Tonight, welcome you, councilmember, staff and fathom representative. Welcome to Tahoe meeting. I know most of you want to solve your problem, not what you are here today. And also, we would like to hear some comment from any citizen, good or bad. We are here to listen to you. Please, make sure you want to speak. You have to put your full name, phone number, address, and I would like, with many people like this, I would like to limit three minutes per person. And I will remind you when thirty second approach of ending of your speech. By request of the police chief, Cody Phillips, I will read you a tax subpoena code. Title nine, offense against the public order and decency. Chapter forty-two, disorderly conduct and relate offenses. Section forty-two point five, disrupting the meeting or progression. A, a person commit an offense if with intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting procession or gathering, he obstruct or interfere with the meeting procession or gathering by physical action or verbal utterance. B, in offense under section E class B misdemeanor. Article one nine seven-three, sixty-third legislation, page number eight-eight-three, chapter three-nine-nine, section one, affecting date January one nineteen seventy-four. Amendment by Acts nineteen ninety-three, seventy-third legislation, chapter nine-hundred, section one point oh-one, affecting date September first nineteen ninety-four. Begin of the Tahoe meeting, I would like to invite Mr. Reg Fair. He will have a short presentation to you. Thank you.
Okay. Bob stated that he would, they shouldn't have to give their address that way.
No, 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 I don't read them publicly.
Just the name.
Before you start, Councilman Watkins, just say, don't read your address as yet. Reason you have your address here so the staff and the fathom representative understand where you live so they can solve the problem and work with you. That's all, but on publicly, I will not read your location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council, and good evening to you. Good evening to the citizens here tonight. I'm the assistant city manager here at the city, and so I just want to give a presentation that will hopefully communicate kind of the position that we are in and the reasons why we've made certain decisions to move forward and the reason why the council has made certain decisions. A couple of years ago, you know, new management had inherited a system that, you know, water and sewer fund is a system that was just not sustainable. That, you know, not to be critical of any past administrations or anything like that, but the can had been kicked down the road as far as it could be kicked down the road. We had come to a place and time that we were either one of two things that were going to have to happen. Either when Fort Worth passed, or we passed the rate increase from Fort Worth, which is our water supplier, we were either going to have to exponentially increase that rate even more, or we were going to have to subsidize the water sewer fund with the general fund, which is your property and sales tax, and that's just inappropriate and shouldn't be done because the water sewer fund should take care of itself. Water pays for water, and then the property tax and sales tax takes care of the general fund. So, we were just in a really bad situation. Best way to kind of describe it, maybe the analogy that I would use is if you had a real high credit card debt with a high credit interest rate and your minimum payment really wasn't even covering the interest on it anymore. And so, with that, I'll explain it and I'll show it here in just a moment, and hopefully that will communicate where we were, where we are. Some things that I wanted to clear up tonight was I've heard and I've seen in social media, and I can understand it, I'm not being critical, but I just want to make sure I clear it up, that we are not trying to recover lost revenues from the past. We're not increasing rates to compensate for lost revenue. And we're going to, we're going to be in a bind for a while because of that, but we're not going back and doing that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. The water rates increased because of fathom is what some people are saying. It's not true. Not one penny is added to a bill because of fathom, and fathom will explain how they're paid in just a little bit, but it's done through efficiencies. Not one penny was increased because of them in your water bill. I've heard that the city spent several million dollars to save one million dollars, or a million dollars and a half a year, whatever. Well, there's some truth to that, but that's not the whole truth. That savings is every single year, so the first half of this contract, those meters will be paying for themselves, and eventually, we can get to the point where we pay our capital projects in the water and sewer fund, which should be paying for those things, the routine capital projects, but we will eventually be able to not have to borrow money anymore to do that. So, again, I will show that in a little bit. The other thing was is, it says that I've heard that you can buy meters, and people have thrown around the different costs for meters and that kind of thing, but I want everybody to understand that these are high-tech smart meters. There's over thirteen thousand of them. The cost not only included the meter, but the installation, the platform, the information technology platform, software, data points, migration, and again, fathom can explain that better than I can, but it is a large undertaking. For a city, a city to migrate of this size to a new system, even if it was in-house, there would just be some unanticipated issues that come up from time to time. But we're about done with this transition. I think there's a hundred and fifty-six meters left to replace, and then we will be done with the transition. So, let me get started with this presentation. Okay, if you'll look, and it should be, if you'll look right here, I got a row of two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and seventeen. And so, what you'll see is that water purchased from Fort Worth in two thousand and fifteen was one point six billion gallons purchased. The water that was billed was one point four billion. What that means is, is that there was a loss because we had old meters in the ground, some twenty-five, thirty years old, maybe loader, but we're not capturing all the water. Now, we're not capturing anything that wasn't used, we're trying to capture what was actually utilized. And so, what that means is, that particular year, we had two hundred and nineteen million gallons of lost water, and that translated into one point two million. Now, we're just talking about the water portion of your bill, not the wastewater, not the drainage, just the water. I'm fixing to get to those other things in a moment. And so, the only increases that have passed through were from our supplier because we couldn't absorb it anymore. And that was, and quite frankly, we should have been passing them back some years when, when they didn't because now we're trying to play this catch-up game. So, and we had a three point one-nine percent increase in the water rate in two thousand and fifteen. We actually had a decrease, not much, but a decrease in two thousand and sixteen for the water. And then we had a large increase from Fort Worth, eleven point two-eight percent in two thousand and seventeen. And in the same thing, when I went over two thousand and fifteen, it's just the same thing. We had a hundred and ninety-two million gallons that Title nine, Offense Against the Public Order and Decency. Chapter forty-two, Disorderly Conduct and Relate Offenses. Section forty-two point five, Disrupting the Meeting or Progression. A. A person commits an offense if, with intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting, procession, or gathering, he obstructs or interferes with the meeting, procession, or gathering by physical action or verbal utterance. B. An offense under this section, E-class B, misdemeanor. Article one-nine-seven-three, sixty-third legislation, page number eight-eight-three, chapter three-nine-nine, section one, affecting date, January one, nineteen seventy-four. Amendment by Acts nineteen ninety-three, seventy-third legislation, chapter nine-hundred, section one point oh-one, affecting date, September first, nineteen ninety-four. Begin of the town hall meeting, I would like to invite Mr. Rex Fell. He will have a short presentation to you. Thank you.
Okay. Bob stated that he would, they shouldn't have to give their address. That way people know.
No, no, no. I don't read them publicly.
Just the name, just the name. Not on publicly, don't worry. Jet name.
Before you start, Councilman Watkins, just say, don't read your address. I just, reason you have your address here, so the staff and Fathom represented to understand where you live, so they can solve the problem and work with you. That's all. But on publicly, I will not read your location. Thank you.
Yes, Fell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council, and good evening to you. Good evening to the citizens here tonight. I'm the Assistant City Manager here at the city, and so I just want to give a presentation that will hopefully communicate kind of the position that we are in, and the reasons why we've made certain decisions to move forward, and the reason why the council has made certain decisions. A couple of years ago, you know, new management had inherited a system that, you know, water and sewer fund, a system that was just not sustainable. That, you know, not to be critical of any past administrations or anything like that, but the can had been kicked down the road as far as it could be kicked down the road. We had come to a place and time that we were either, one of two things are going, were going to have to happen. Either when Fort Worth passed it, or we passed the rate increase from Fort Worth, which is our water supplier, we were either going to have to exponentially increase that rate even more, or we were going to have to subsidize the water sewer fund with the general fund, which is your property and sales tax. And that's just inappropriate and shouldn't be done, because the water sewer fund should take care of itself. Water pays for water, and then the property tax and sales tax takes care of the general fund. So, we were just in a really bad situation. Best way to kind of describe it, maybe the analogy that I would use is if you had a real high credit card debt with a high credit interest rate, and your minimum payment really wasn't even covering the interest on it anymore. And so, with that, I'll explain it, and I'll show it here in just a moment, and hopefully that will communicate where we were, where we are. Some things that I wanted to clear up tonight was I've heard and I've seen in social media, and I can understand it, I'm not being critical, but I just want to make sure I clear it up, that we are not trying to recover lost revenues from the past. We're not increasing rates to compensate for lost revenue. And we're going to, we're going to be in a bind for a while because of that, but we're not going back and doing that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. The water rates increased because of Fathom is what some people are saying. It's not true. Not one penny is added to a bill because of Fathom. And Fathom will explain how they're paid in just a little bit, but it's done through efficiencies. Not one penny was increased because of them and your water bill. I've heard that the city spent several million dollars to save one million dollars, or a million dollars and a half a year, whatever. Well, there's some truth to that, but that's not the whole truth. That savings is every single year. So, the first half of this contract, those meters will be paying for themselves, and eventually, we can get to the point where we pay our capital projects in the water and sewer fund, which should be paying for those things, the routine capital projects. But we will eventually be able to not have to borrow money anymore to do that. So, again, I will show that in a little bit. The other thing was, is it says that, I've heard that you can buy meters, and people have thrown around the different costs for meters and that kind of thing, but I want everybody to understand that these are high-tech smart meters. There's over thirteen thousand of them. The cost not only included the meter, but the installation, the platform, the information technology platform, software, data points, migration, and again, Fathom can explain that better than I can, but it is a large undertaking. For a city, a city to migrate of this size to a new system, even if it was in-house, there would just be some unanticipated issues that come up from time to time. But we're about done with this transition. I think there's a hundred and fifty-six meters left to replace, and then we will be done with the transition. So, let me get started with this presentation. Okay, if you'll look, and it should be, if you'll look right here, I got a row of two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and two thousand seventeen. And so, what you'll see is that water purchased from Fort Worth in two thousand fifteen was one point six billion gallons purchased. The water that was billed was one point four billion. What that means is, is that there was a loss, because we had old meters in the ground, some twenty-five, thirty years old, maybe older, but we're not capturing all the water. Now, we're not capturing anything that wasn't used, we're trying to capture what was actually utilized. And so, what that means is, that particular year, we had two hundred and nineteen million gallons of lost water. And that translated into one point two million. Now, we're just talking about the water portion of your bill, not the wastewater, not the drainage, just the water. I'm fixing to get to those other things in a moment. And so, the only increases that have passed through were from our supplier, because we couldn't absorb it anymore. And that was, and quite frankly, we should have been passing them back some years when they didn't, because now we're trying to play this catch-up game. So, and we had a three point one-nine percent increase in the water rate in two thousand fifteen. We actually had a decrease, not much, but a decrease in two thousand sixteen for the water. And then, we had a large increase from Fort Worth, eleven point two-eight percent in two thousand seventeen. And in the same thing, when I went over to two thousand fifteen, it's just the same thing, we had a hundred and ninety-two million gallons that were, that was lost, that was used but not measured because of old meters. Now, what I would say, the probably fifteen to twenty percent of the meters that were out there were grossly inaccurate. And the only reason I say that is because you can see, every year, it's usually between that, that much as far as water loss percentage. Now, I'm going to go to the next slide, just to show you a graph to explain. Now, this is actually billions of gallons, but we're talking about the difference, the delta here, which is in millions. So, like this was a hundred and ninety-two million right here. So, that's just to kind of give you a visual. So, water purchase versus water billed, that means water we purchased out of Fort Worth. Understand that Fort Worth meters every gallon that comes into this city, and they have newer infrastructure, and so theirs is accurate. Okay, so now I'm going to show you the sewer. This is your wastewater portion of your bill. Now, same thing, we have two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. We're actually in a little worse shape when you talk about sewer, and I will explain that. In two thousand fifteen, I'm just going to go, you know, through the, down on one year, and you can do it yourself on the others, but we had paid Fort Worth, because we have to treat our wastewater, it's law. So, we had to pay Fort Worth one point six, for one point six billion gallons of treated water. And then, we, but we only were billed, or were able to recover, one point two. Now, I want to show, tell you the reason for this is because we have an older infrastructure. This city developed, this was the original county seat, this area. But this developed a long time ago, and we had lot-to-lot drainage. And I'm going to talk about drainage in a moment, because that's very important. But we have four hundred and seventy-five unbilled, four hundred and seventy-five million unbilled gallons, which is one point eight million dollars in lost revenue. Now, Fort Worth increased your sewer rates whilst, the council passed it through, but they didn't have a choice. I don't want to beat up on council when it's not time. They had no choice. They had to pass by the rate increase for eight point nine-seven percent. In two thousand sixteen, we had a decrease in the rate, and in two thousand seventeen, we had another slight decrease in the rate. But as you can see, you're averaging over a period of time, and we could go back and show you, it looks just the same going backwards, of all these large losses. Okay, so that was, that's kind of the deal there. But part of this is because of our drainage is older, that we have on these, if you'll notice, these years, we had more rain, we had more gallons that were treated that we had to pay for, because sometimes stormwater gets into the sewer system. And, you know, those are things that need to be corrected, but those are capital projects that cost a lot of money. And under this system, we're not sustaining. Most cities can pay for their routine capital projects with their water and sewer funds, but we're not, we're not collecting enough. And we're trying not to raise rates, we're just trying our best to recover what people are using. Because, you know, what I'm trying to explain is that unknowingly, and I was one of them, unknowingly, some people have been underpaying for water. So, that means the rest of the citizens are subsidizing that water usage, because we still have to pay it. We don't have our own source. All right, let me go further. This just gives you another visual of the difference, the delta in millions of gallons, all right, of this wastewater that we're having to pay for to be treated. Now, when I, when I show this slide, I want everybody to realize that water, the liquid substance, is just part of, that's just part of what you pay for. The, it's really what you're paying for the most of, or at least as much of, is the maintenance, the infrastructure, the repair, the tower that had, the water quality that has to constantly be monitored with pumpers, we have water main breaks, we do have an odor system. And so, that's what you're paying for. So, in two thousand fifteen, we had water sewer revenues of seventeen million, that's your water and sewer that we collected. We paid Fort Worth eight million, and our operating costs for everything that's on this side of the water, of the Fort Worth system, we have to pay for this. That's your, your water department. That's your equipment, that's your personnel, that's everything, and that's repairs, by the way. That's also repairs. And so, as you can see, there's, we're not collecting enough to pay for this system. Now, this isn't even counting, and I want to make sure I point this out. This is not even counting down here, this really should be red numbers. We're not, we're having to borrow this every year, just to keep up with the minimal water, capital water projects. All right, so we have to do COs to pay for that. Now, so on top of that, we're having to borrow money to chase after a system that's not paying for itself, and we truly need to do a whole lot more in replacement and capital projects than we currently do. But this is the minimal that we do to keep things going and keep your faucets on and water coming. All right, so now I'm going to explain the drainage fund. Now, the drainage is real important, because we have to have drainage projects, and we need to do a lot of drainage improvement, because we want to keep that stormwater out of the, of the wastewater, so that we're not being billed for treating extra water. And so, you have to have a drainage department. Now, recently, you've heard things like, well, that drainage fee is just some slush fund. It's not true. That is absolutely untrue. Your drainage fund, this fund right here, this fee pays for your drainage department. Now, you've got to remember, this city, like I said, was developed a long time ago, back when they did lot-to-lot drainage and those kind of things. We have neighborhoods that if it wasn't for our drainage guys constantly cleaning things out, constantly working on these drainage improvements, the neighborhoods would flood. Down on Baker's a perfect example, there's numerous ones like that. We have to have a drainage department. Now, you could say, well, I don't want it on my water bill. Well, if it gets moved to the general fund, that's one point eight million dollars right here, is what it costs to run it. That's eight point one-six percent on your property tax. So, you'll go from point six-six-one-eight to point seven-four-two-five, or something like that. So, that's absolutely not true. Now, only two times has this city ever raised the drainage fee, and in the, the last time it was raised is in two thousand sixteen. But you can see that it's still not covering all the cost. Now, I will tell you that this is already being subsidized by the general fund. These capital projects are already being subsidized by the general fund, and that is not ideal. And I'm not going to lie to you, I'm going to tell you the truth, something's going to eventually have to give here, because until we get that stormwater to quit infiltrating our wastewater, and we improve some of the drainage around here, we need to do large capital projects, but we're not able to do that. This fee, this six dollars and eighty-one cents, is going to have to go up again. It was raised in two thousand sixteen, from six point one-nine to six dollars and eighty-one cents. So, the council met, and staff and council agreed, I believe it was Councilman Fowler at that time, that made the suggestion that we have to do something, and we all agreed with him. It is true. So, it was raised from six nineteen to six eighty-one. So, with that, I got another slide here, and this is a scary thing. I'm just going to read the first two, and I think that the city manager has some thoughts about this particular slide. According to the Texas Water Development Board, "The vast majority of the costs, approximately fifty-nine point five billion, is associated with projects sponsored by municipal water user groups and wholesale water providers that also provide water to municipal water users. Municipal water users faced the greatest increase in water needs from approximately eleven percent of all state water needs in two thousand twenty to thirty-eight percent in two thousand seventy. Our region's water, annual water, are estimated to increase nine hundred and eighty-five percent between twenty-twenty and twenty-seven." That's scary. We're going to have to think different about how we feel about water, because it's, right now, we're, to fund the growth of an area like this, they're working on a project that's going to feed our area. It's a nine-foot-in-diameter pipe that comes all the way from Palestine. We're already pulling from multiple reservoirs. So, I just wanted you guys to know, this is the challenges that the council members and the staff have, and we're trying to do the best that we can, and we haven't passed things along, because we don't want to pass things along. We're just to the point that we don't have much of a choice. I think you have some thoughts?
Sure, I just, this, this slide that Rex has up here now, this was from our second budget workshop that we had this year. And of course, we paid a lot of attention to the water and sewer rate. And basically, what we're trying to illustrate, and what we were trying to communicate to the council at the time, was that, as Rex alluded to earlier, this problem has really been kicked down the road. And if you look at the Texas Water Development Board's website, there are water reports that go back to the nineteen fifties on there. So, what I did was, I went on that site, and I said, okay, I want to take a look at what projects were approved for the two thousand twelve water plan. And to be approved for the two thousand twelve water plan, you had to have your application in in two thousand eleven. So, going back to two thousand eleven, and you can look up here, and I pulled three cities that are real close to us, you can see Fort Worth, they put their application together and got seventy-six million dollar loan from the TWDB to do exactly what we just did, implement a large meter replacement program. You can see Bedford, Bedford got a thirty million dollar loan to, to help their distribution improvements. And then, you can see Ulyss. Ulyss is pretty close to us in size, but you can see, way back in two thousand eleven, Ulyss put in for this program to get a loan to do exactly what we're doing right now, meter replacement and leak detection. And what's interesting, but as I did research on, I found all kinds of articles basically telling any city that would listen or pay attention that this was going to happen. One of those articles I found in the Metro-Tex Association of Realtors website from October fifth of two thousand eleven, which you can go to their website and research it, but there was so much information out there from both nationally on the state level to say, hey, we have an issue. So, municipalities, the burden is really on you to fix this. So, that's where we are now in two thousand eighteen, fixing a problem that other cities around us were fixing back in two thousand eleven. So, thank you, Rex.
And I'm going to close and turn this over to Jason Bethke from Fathom. He's going to explain that, how we are trying to climb out of this situation and make it the best possible scenario for the citizens. So, we're going to do that now, but I did want to just say this, and people that know me, know that I'm truthful about this, I'll work day and night, the city manager and I both live here, we love this city, we care very much for this community. Anything that I can do, I will do, we will work with you, but I just wanted you to know that, that he and I and this staff, we do care very much for these, for these citizens and for you guys. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Fell, and welcome, Jason Baker.
Great, thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak with you again today. Been, I think it was early June when I was last here, and I look forward to hearing the commentary from the community as well later this, later this evening. But I wanted to start a little bit with just sort of what we've done recently around the project, and what we can do tonight for the community. So, I've got my team here, once I'm done going through the presentation, and we open it up for public comments, they're going to go to a separate room, and if there are folks here that have particular issues around a particular bill, they're happy to stay and review those individually with customers as we, as we go through the evening. So, if you'd like to do that, we can talk about the logistics right after, right after we're done with the presentation. So, this evening, I wanted to talk a little bit about why we started the project to begin with. I know there's been a lot of commentary about what exactly our scope is, so I wanted to work to help clarify that, along, talk through the metering system, as well as our contract, and then walk through exactly where we are in the project, and do a project update on the various key areas of the, of the project. And so, first off, from a city goals perspective, we wanted to put in this project in a way that we could expand customer service with the latest technologies. And so, that goes to the smart metering, it also goes to the portals, as well as a lot of the back office efficiencies that come with adopting technology into this community. We also wanted to provide some local outreach, which is why we have the payment center located nearby. We also wanted to work to try and delay future rate increases that might be required as water costs continue to increase, whether that come from buying water from Fort Worth, or just the general cost increases of replacing infrastructure and treating the water quality elements. We wanted to also attack this lost water issue and replace some of the meters, or all of the meters throughout the community, as many of those were twenty-five to thirty years old, and were well beyond their useful life. And then, drive some efficiencies with the technology for employees to, and customers to self-serve, and get access to the data, and quite frankly, answer, I think, the question, help answer the question, I think, most utilities are asking, which is, where should I spend my next capital dollar most efficiently? Because as you can see, the need for dollars is not going to be met from the state or federal governments. And then, we also wanted to work in partnership, as hopefully you've seen over the last sixteen months, that we've been doing together to try and tackle this large project. Achieving all of these goals, we knew at the beginning, the city knew at the beginning, that it was going to require the replacement of the meters, as well as a complete replacement of the existing software that was the back office and managing the data in order to deliver these goals. So, I'm not going to go over this particular slide in detail, obviously, but it gives you a sense of just how much work had to be completed for this project to be completed. It was planning phases and design phases, build, we had to run testing, as well as the cutover for a complete new back office financial system, which was all the billing and portal pieces you've heard about, as well as a large construction project that went through replacing every single meter in the community, as well as standing up a radio network to read all of those meters and all the data management behind that. And so, it's a large project, and I thought maybe this slide would help a little bit explain the various pieces. And so, this always starts with the infrastructure, and as we talk about the infrastructure, that's the smart meters and the hardware, the installation elements, capturing all of that data. As you can imagine, we're not going back to those meters every month to read them, so getting the data now means we, we will know where to find them in fifteen years when they need to be replaced. And so, all of that has to be geospatially done. We also have to run comparisons against all the financial systems to make sure that we're billing the correct amounts, and then engage with you from a public involvement perspective on communicating what exactly is happening, and meetings like this, so that we can continue to get the message out around how you can use these solutions to control your water use and ultimately your bill. That is the infrastructure piece, but that in the end then leads to a requirement for a large software platform. We have to host the software, build the disaster recovery, so we don't lose any data, run the security, things like the red flag rules, the PCI compliance around credit cards, maintaining and managing all the uptime, so you have access. And then, there's a series of software applications that need to be now built but integrated, which include things to manage all of the metering data, which is now a massive amount of information, as it's coming every fifteen minutes. The customer portal, which we'll talk some more about, the customer information and utility billing system, as well as electronic work order system for the city, so they can get away from doing the work orders in paper format, and now do them on tablets and computers, which helps make them more efficient. And then, bringing all of that data together, it's via a business intelligence system, so that all of the customer data and the consumption data can help bring better actionable information to, to the community and to staff, so they can make those decisions. We also provide services, and so we actually, we do the billing for the community, as well as the customer care, which you've seen in the call centers, as well as the local payment center. We help manage and maintain the work order management system, manage all of the warranties around the equipment that we've deployed, both the radio infrastructure and the meter and the radios. And then, we maintain some oversight around ensuring that all of the customers are being billed as accurately as possible, and everybody is paying their fair share across the community. And then, lastly, there's some community engagement pieces, and some benchmarking, and some best practices that we try to bring to the table to allow the community to continue to get better. And this is what the project was that we embarked on to complete, and I'm happy to report that we're, we're nearly done. There's been a lot of discussion, I think, on the social media around the meters, and so, obviously, Fathom doesn't make the electronic water meters, doesn't make the smart meters, but we have worked to select one of the leading partners in the industry to provide those meters. We worked with the city closely on that selection. And so, we've selected the Neptune meters, which is a proven industry leader. They have over three thousand metering systems across the US. They've got an installed base of more than fifteen million radios. Actually, if you look at their meters, they have about one of every four residential meters in the United States is a Neptune meter. Their annual production's about two million meters and about a million and a half radios. They test all of the meters to the American Waterworks Association standards as they leave the factory, so every single meter is tested before it is shipped. They've been a reliable partner to us, they offer the best warranties to the city, we've used them to deploy about a hundred thousand units, and, and they're also American-made. And so, that's a bit on the metering solution that's been deployed to Halton City. A bit about our contract, as we talked, our, our contract is really two phases. It's really an implementation agreement, which is the software, the implementation, the installation, the equipment, the construction, all the things we showed in the previous slide. That's about an eight million dollar project, and it's been financed over fifteen years at a fixed rate, which means that the cost to read those meters is now not going up over time. It's a flat rate now, we pay the same today as you pay in fifteen years. And then, our other part of our agreement is our recurring services, which is maintaining the software, hosting the software, sending the bills, the postage, the mailing. That agreement is structured as a fifteen-year agreement, but as three basically five-year agreements. We're paid four dollars and fifty cents per active account to execute that service. When we did the business case with the city, we're doing that for less money. that for less money than the city was doing it for when we looked at what they were doing. So, actually, it's a net decrease in costs to hire us. We can do that because we can leverage technology and the scale that we bring to do it for less money than the city could do it for internally. The city also negotiated that we fix that fee until into 2020, um, at which point then we get a little relief and it can go up no more than, uh, the Consumer Price Index, which is basically tied to inflation. And so when you put all this together and you look at the, uh, reduction in the non-revenue water, you look at the billing data anomaly corrections, uh, the reduction in both the bad debt and bad write and, and write-offs that come from implementing the technology and us running the back office solution for billing and customer service, uh, this project essentially funds itself. And so, there was no impact to Halton City rates as a function of, uh, executing this agreement. So, I wanted to talk a little about how that was working out from a revenue perspective. Uh, normally, we wait about a year after the last meter's installed to bring this information back to council. I thought it was important with this public meeting to do some preliminary findings, and so we've done that. And basically, what we did is we took a look at, uh, all of the customers who lived in their homes in 2017 and lived in their homes in 2018, and did a comparison of how much water that particular subset of the population used, because it's, we didn't wanna have, uh, the variability of new people moving in and out of the houses, so tried to keep it as true as we could. What we've seen is that the billed consumption is up ten percent or more, uh, in the la, over last year, which is, I'm sure, a bit of why the room is full. Um, also, average day consumption is up about ten percent. And so, what that's coming from is the more accurate meters, uh, that have been basically replaced, the twenty-five-year-old meters with new meters, and they're now more accurately capturing all the flow that is, uh, being billed. And actually, that number ties quite nicely to, uh, Rex's presentation a little earlier. So, uh, provided this continues, and we expect it will, um, there will be a ten percent increase of billed consumption, uh, overall, which is approximately a million dollars a year, which ties into the original, uh, business case that we presented, uh, when we, uh, executed this contract with the city. So, everything is working as, uh, is, is working as planned so far. I also wanna talk about, a little bit on the projects, sort of how close we are to completion, and so I'll talk about this in three different ways. Uh, we have the metering, the AMI or the smart metering equipment. Uh, we'll do a little customer service update, as well as, uh, a little bit on the portal. And so, as we look at the meters, uh, we're ninety-eight point eight percent complete. Uh, there's a hundred and fifty-five locations that need to be, uh, conti, that need to be finished. About a hundred and fourteen of those, uh, we're gonna require the city's assistance to complete just because of locations. Uh, we did, as you remember, I was up here in June. We thought we would be done in July. We did have some supply issues from the manufacturer. We weren't able to get all the parts. Uh, those parts should arrive, uh, this Friday, at which point we expect to finish these remaining hundred and fifty-five locations by, uh, the end of August. And so, we're nearly complete with all the transitions of the metering and AMI equipment. A little bit on customer service. Um, every time, uh, anyone interacts, uh, with our call center, they are given an opportunity to take a survey. I'm sure you're familiar with that from other service providers. Uh, to date, from January to July, we've taken five thousand nine hundred and thirty-two of those surveys. Uh, the average score is a nine point three, so from a customer service, um, component, it appears that we're, uh, meeting the bar. But we also have a very high, uh, first, uh, call resolution, which is in the high ninety percent. So, basically, that goes to training of the staff who are answering the calls and working with customers that were able to resolve ninety percent of all those calls on, on the very first time and not, don't have to have customers call back. We've also been working hard on the billing accuracy. Uh, as you can imagine, a project of this magnitude, we continue to change out meters. Uh, this can be very challenging. Uh, right now, over the last, uh, I think it's six months, we've achieved a ninety-eight point eight percent accuracy rating. Uh, that continues to increase. In July, it was at ninety-nine point nine percent. There was also a lot of discussion around how to address, uh, billing calendars and cycles. Uh, folks were looking for there to be one, uh, bill date per month, I believe was the request. And so I just wanted to share a little bit about what all has to go into trying to build out a cycle and billing calendar. And so these are essentially a list of some of the high-level requirements that we're trying to work through. And so, we know that the meter read dates have to be on a, uh, on a business day. We only, we make sure that the reads are at least twenty five, between twenty-five and thirty-five days, uh, in between each other. The bill dates have to be on business days. The due dates are twenty days, um, calendar days after the bill date. We're not gonna have due, or we are gonna have due dates that may happen on a holiday or a weekend. But I think the most important one up here is that the disconnect day is always going to be a Wednesday. And so, what this, what this allows for is for customers to have a few days in the beginning of the week to ensure that the bill gets paid, and if they are, happen to be disconnected, they have a few days to come in and get reconnected, and staff can reconnect those meters before the weekend, because as we talked with staff, we didn't wanna have, uh, anyone have the experience of not being able to have water over the weekend. That drives a considerable amount of, uh, the billing calendar, and really prevents, uh, the activity around, uh, being able to ensure that a bill date never happens twice in the same month. And so if you look at the second line there, you can see the bill date, mail date. This is an example from one of the cycles. You can see that we have a bill date on December 3rd, and then another one on December 31st. And so, I think it's important to note that you don't get more than twelve bills in a year, but sometimes you will get two bills in a given month, because one's at the beginning of the month and one's at the very end of the month. And while we worked hard to try and avoid, um, having this happen, uh, and we did it, I think, for one of the cycles, which was the, had the most folks in it, we were unable to achieve that in all the other cycles, just as a function of all of those other requirements. And so, if we wanted to change this, and I don't recommend it, um, we would have to allow for disconnect days to happen on any day, uh, throughout the week, which I think exposes the issue of having customers maybe not be able to get connected on a Friday afternoon and have to wait the weekend, uh, for water, which I don't think is a great customer service solution. So, this is just a little bit on, uh, why the billing calendar and cycle billing is the way it is. Uh, but we're happy to work continually with staff and city and the community to work on those policies, to see what we might wanna change. Lastly, I'll talk a little bit about the portal. Uh, as you know, we rolled out the new portal, um, in June. That provided a lot more graphical representation of the hourly usage. It also provided some, uh, insights into continuous consumption, or, or what we often call leaks, uh, provided notifications. It also provided some help sections for identifying where that might be coming from. Uh, it allows you to compare yourself to other like customers to see how you might, uh, be, be using water that might, you might wanna change. Uh, it also has some high consumption alerting, as well as some bill alerting when your bill is trending over a certain dollar amount. And so this, I think, is important because part of this project was to deliver the information to you as a community, so that you could make choices about how water was being used in your own homes and ultimately, uh, address, um, what you pay for water, uh, across, across, for yourself as water rates continue to, uh, increase for the reasons we've talked about. Uh, just a little bit on the, uh, portal, uh, adoption. About twenty-eight percent of the community now has access to the portal. They've logged on. They're using it on a regular basis. Uh, this is a pretty, pretty rapid adoption, so I think, uh, that's good signs that more and more folks, and we encourage people to use the portal to find out more about their information, as well as, uh, communicate with us and to, and to pay bills. So lastly, I wanted to say thank you, uh, for the continued partnership from council and staff, um, and you as a community. Um, I see there are quite a few of you, uh, here, and we're, three minutes sounds like an eternity, um, when we think of everybody talking. But, uh, one of the things that may be helpful is if, uh, when we're through with these presentations and maybe through some of the commentary, if we form some groups or a committee, uh, with a few folks that maybe you elect to come meet with us and staff, uh, we'd be happy to do that, to talk about some of these policy issues, uh, or policy things that you might wanna see changed, that would provide for better customer service experience, or for changes to be made in the, uh, software platform that we can continue to, uh, improve, uh, over time. And so that would be just one thing that I might, uh, leave you with as a, as an option, or we'd be happy to, uh, contribute to that in any way we can. So with that, um, I think Tracy and team are gonna set up in the room, uh, down, down the hall?
Right. They're gonna be, if you know where the council office is, it's in that hallway that runs east and west out there. If you're in the back of the room and you wanna go talk to the ladies individually, you can go down the hallway, take a left. There's a police officer sitting in the hallway out there. If you go through this way, this is the pre-council chambers. You can go right through them out into the hallway. Um, the ladies are only gonna be able to deal with one of you at a time because of confidentiality, but they will be in that room ready to assist you if you wanna go have them pull up your bill, explain anything, answer a question for you. So it's that hallway that runs east and west on that side of the building. And if it's easier for you to get to it to the back, if you're waiting in line, um, this is on the TV in here in the pre-council room, so you won't be missing it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jason Beck, uh, for a good presentation, and, uh, next I would like to, uh, Councilman, uh...
Oh, you can't, you can't do it right now.
Not right now. Uh, Councilman, what could?
I may have missed it. Uh, did, did we discuss the credit card charges, Rex?
Ma'am, thi- thi- this way would be the time for you, ma'am. Right now, uh, the staff and the, uh, representative from Fathom, uh, present to you the presentation, ma'am. Please.
Rex, did we discuss the credit card charges? Do you, do you want me to say what I think? And then you can say what you know?
Well, I'll, I'll, okay, if, I would like to, uh, I'll go ahead and take this for a few minutes, and then, Councilman, if you're okay with that. The, uh, there's been some talk about the, sometimes, uh, if you wanna pay certain ways, you have to pay a, a fee, a credit card fee, right? Or a convenience fee. Well, um, cities are not allowed to do like, like a merchant would do, where they, where they charge a three percent fee or something like that, so they can only charge a flat fee. We were, the city, the taxpayers, were paying about, right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in credit card fees. Now, what we did is we, so, so what the council had done not too long ago is said, "Well, it's not fair that everybody has to pay for that fee because we give so many alternative ways to pay." You can go to the, pay cash, you can write a check, you can, there's other ways you can pay besides, uh, bank drafts. There's other ways you can pay by just sides writing, uh, uh, using a convenience fee with a credit card. Now, when you go to, uh, conveni, uh, uh, department store, for example, what they do to collect their three percent fee is that they just adjust the co, the, the price on their products. And so, it, they, if it's three percent, you know, they're adjusting three or more percent to recover that cost. But if you write a check and don't use a credit card, you're still paying for that fee whether you know it or not. But what we said is this is, this is taxpayers', so it's not fair for, uh, and I'm just gonna use, I'm making up names, but it's not fair for Mr. Smith to pay for a convenience fee for, uh, uh, Mr. Jones if he does not wanna pay that fee. So, we, so we only do a set fee that helps recover those costs for the taxpayers'. So, so that's what that's about. Now, you don't have to pay with a credit card if you don't want to. Uh, and so, there is a fee there, uh, that's two fifty. And so, if you have a, I mean, a hundred and twenty dollar bill, and you don't wanna pay with a credit card, and you wanna save that two fifty, there's other ways you can pay. So that's the reason why that, that we don't just put across-the-board percentage fee. Number one, we can't, and number two, we wouldn't want to, because if you're gonna pay for the convenience, that's your choice, but it may not be the choice of some other taxpayer to pay for that. So that's the reason. Now, um, we came up with the two fifty because it just helps offset the cost. Now, as far as I know, utilities, can, can they charge percentage-wise? But, but y'all chose to honor what, what we do because that way citizens aren't forced to be paying some increase in a fee, no matter how small it is, if they don't want to. So did I, did I explain that right? Okay. Thank you. Did you have something else, Councilman?
I addressed this when it came up several months ago, that how unfair I thought it was. Uh, I understand what you're saying, that one person's having to pay for somebody else's if you do it otherwise. One of the arguments I would have, and I didn't think of it at the time, matter of fact, I didn't think of it till you and I talked about it the other day, and I didn't mention this to you. The city can't, the city can't set a, uh, a floating rate. You're telling me that Fathom can't, my, my, my question would be, if I was out there, I don't pay by credit card, but if I was out there paying by credit card, uh, I think I'd be finding out why we have a law, because the city doesn't get the money or make money off the credit card. Fathom doesn't get the money or make money off the credit card. It's the bank is making the money off the credit card. So I see no reason whatsoever that there ought to be a flat, I mean, that there ought to be a flat rate. Now then, let's take the other side of the coin. Across the street, my water bill is like fifty dollars, somewhere in there. So, then, and I, and I took a figure of around two percent that I think the city is paying, give or take. I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what the percentage is instead of the two dollars and a half. I don't know what the percentage is. But let's just take two percent. If I put it on credit card across the street, and had to pay two and a half, two percent of fi, of fifty dollars is one dollar. So I'm getting, so I'm getting hurt there. On the other hand, at my house, where I've been for forty years, this last month, my bill was two hundred and fifty-five dollars. By the way, the reason my water bill was two hundred and fifty, uh, was two hundred and fifty-five dollars is that I had Sedana run me a chart. I didn't have any complaints. I just wanted something to say when somebody called me. My bill was two hundred and fifty-five dollars. She also was kind enough to highlight the fact that my wa, when my wife waters sprinkled our yard with our sprinklers, it's twenty-four-hundred gallons is what it cost to sprinkle our yard. That was the low one. I had a twenty-five-hundred and a twenty-six-hundred. Well, my wife doesn't spend much money, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let her water the yard, 'cause like she, she has to sit around and look at it all day. She stays home, and so that's, that's fine. All I'm doing is pointing out the fact that I don't, I, I certainly would like the fact that I would only be in, charged two dollars and a half, because at the house, I'd be paying five dollars on a percentage basis. So, before one runs out and has a runaway about the fact, if your bill's down around, if your di, bill's down around, uh, a hundred, a hundred and a half, a hundred and quarter, if it's in that range, you're doing, you're doing real good at the two and a half. If your bill's lower than that, then you're, it's costing you a little.
Right.
But that's just one of the things. And I didn't like it on the front, and I suggested somebody, I may talk to the attorney about it afterwards, 'cause I, I didn't think about this till the other day. If we're not making the money, which we're not, if Fathom's not making the money, which they're not, are you telling me that a, that a, a, a business, like a bank, can't charge, it's their fee, then they should be able to charge, they should be able to charge the sliding rate? Uh, I understand about the, about the, um, city swallowing the, the, the problem. A few years ago, I had a customer, I'd never had taken credit cards in my life. I had a business across, I had a business across the street that, uh, told me that if I didn't let them start charging it on, on credit cards, that they were not, I would not, no longer do their bus, do their printing, okay? So I said, "Okay, I'll just swallow that." That'll be, at the end of the year, it cost me six thousand dollars. So this is a small operation. The city's a big operation. So, I, I, I got a lot of misunderstanding, uh, on Facebook and here and there, and people that pick up the phone and call me every hour, telling me that how we were, that's one more way we were making profit and we're not, and we're losing money, and we're still gonna lose money at that, even at that rate. I suppose, I guess, I don't know, Fathom, I guess loses that money, but that's, that's, that's a couple of things I wanted to touch on. I, I raised, uh, a lot of cane, stuff that's nice. When did I start to say? I, I raised a lot of cane over the fact that I didn't like it when we put the two and a half on there to start with, 'cause I thought it was, I thought it was grossly unfair to some people, but I also thought it was extremely fair to the people whose bills are over two do, two hundred dollars. I mean, if your bills, if your bill's a hundred and fifty dollars, you, it, uh, the city, it costs the city three, three dollars, so you're still going in the hole.
Right. Yeah, and, and it's not just on water payments. I mean, it's just anything, permitting, i- i- anything that you do to the city. All the city was trying to do is recover the taxpayers' hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in credit card fees. We're just trying to offset that. And, and, and in all fairness, you know, there's different ways to pay if, if you don't wanna use a credit card. But, you know, what we can do is, is we just did this, what, a couple of years ago, or a year ago. We can look at it again as far as a credit card fee. We can look at it again as far as the credit card fee and, uh, the offsetting of the cost. We can, we can have a work session on that in the future and get the finance director involved and, and you know, maybe there's a tiered system you'd like to go to or something like that.
Thank you.
No, I think, I think it's more likely that, as I said, I think it's more likely we, we find out, I don't know who makes this law. I suppose it's a state law, I doubt sure if it's a county law. I can't hear him.
Hey, there's a commission in Austin that bases, that has the rules on that, but we can research it.
Well, the commission in Austin needs to be talked to about the fact that some people, if, from what I can tell, a lot of people have got, or, or their bills are around a hundred dollars. And, 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 and they seem to be satisfied with a hundred dollars. Well, I'm, okay, well, I just told, I just told you, mine's two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Notice. Yes. Ye- yes, I understand, but, uh... Thank you, most of you, and, uh, now we, uh, open for the first person come across the podium to speak. I just remind you that three-minute limit for your speech, and I will remind you thirty seconds. By the way, to respect the speaker on the podium, I would like all of you, if you, who have the telephone turned on, would you turn on vibrate? So, uh, does not disrupt the speaking, okay? Uh, the first? I am, uh, calling Mr. Randy Kaiser. That's number one on the list? Yeah, I, I'm sorry, sir. So you have three minutes? Not now, until you speak.
First of all, thank you all for being here and allowing us to have this meeting, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to work some things out and, and help each other in this situation. I prepared a statement to try to say the most of what I want to say. A lot has already been addressed. Uh, this is a personal situation for me, but I think it addresses the same situation that a lot of people are going through at the same time. And I've lived at my current address, my name's Randy Kaiser, I live at four thousand Georgia Drive, and I've lived at my current address since December two thousand and four. From that time until April two thousand and eighteen, my average bill was around fifty-eight dollars. Halfway through May, I received the amazing gift of a new digital meter. For the seventeen days in May billing cycle with the new meter, my consumption was nineteen thousand nine hundred eleven gallons for a total bill of two hundred and eleven dollars. This is for two people, no pets, no pool, minimum laundry, and, it's already been addressed, a three-station sprinkler system that I did run four days a week for fifteen minutes per station. After contacting Fathom, a customer service, and explaining my shock and the fact that nothing has been, nothing has changed for my water consumption habits, I was schooled on the fact that it was pretty much my fault because of the sprinkler system, and believe it or not, it was mentioned that someone could be stealing my water. And, uh, the end result with my conversation was no concern or, uh, on the exorbitant increase or the desire to get to the bottom of it, or even to check the calibration of the meter. Basically, that's your bill and you must pay it. So I did. The next month, a much greater shock. My bill was three hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-six cents with a water consumption of thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-one gallons. This time, I called the office of Deputy City Manager, Mr. Phelps, and, and left a message the next day. Sedona called me, we had a very good discussion, she was very kind, very kind, and, uh, concerned about the problem. And, um, then just a few days later, Mr. Phelps called me, contacted me. Uh, him, Sedona, and, uh, David came out to my house. They, again, were very kind. They did everything they could do to try to find out what was going on. They was, they checked my water consumption, made sure I didn't have any leaks, which I had zero leaks. And everything they did was superb, and I, I couldn't ask for any better and kinder people to come and, and help me. But the problem still remained. It was my fault, and I was, uh, at a, at an increase of over, and I want to read this to you at the very first, I forgot to. Uh, the increases a lot of the people are facing are a hundred percent, three hundred percent. And for me, according to the information on my water bill, an increase over this time last year was two thousand four hundred and fifty-two percent.
Thirty seconds left.
And so because of that, um, I have dropped my watering course. Needless to say, I, I'm going to have some brown spots, I've got, uh, the grass is dying, I've dropped my water, uh, one day. I've dropped it timeframe-wise, and I just, I've got to have some kind of help. I can't pay this type of bill. I'm going to have to because we have to, we have to have water. So we need your help. I've had a lot more to say, but I don't have time. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, just about time. I would like to, uh, call Mary Hunter. And, uh, if, uh, if I pronounce your name incorrectly, please forgive me, thank you.
Okay, ma'am.
We have a large community of elderly that has lived here thirty, forty, fifty, even sixty years that are having to choose between paying a high water bill or getting a prescription. You have single-family incomes that's going without food because of these high water bills. You talk to the people and they tell you, well, somebody's stealing the water. So now I guess Halton City has a water bandit. Because I'm telling you, there's nobody getting in our gate to steal our water. And it went from a hundred and forty dollars to three hundred and thirty-two in one month. I have talked to a ninety-three-year-old woman that had an eleven-hundred-dollar water bill, went to Fathom, and they told her to pay it or they were cutting it off. That's how they're treating your elderly community that has worked hard for Halton City for all these years. They feel let down, they feel beat up, and they feel like giving up. You cannot have two water bills in one month when you get one check a month. How do you expect them to do that? These people have worked hard for this community. I want to know what y'all are going to do for the elderly. That's when my voice gets loud. Yes, I'm very upset because that could be my mother, but y'all should be upset too because it could be your mother. It could be your child. It could be your grandchild going hungry because they had to pay a five-hundred-dollar water bill. Y'all ought to be ashamed of yourself. I want to know what y'all are going to do to fix it. I have over eight hundred signatures of people in our community. Y'all say it's very limited, it's not. A ten percent increase, we would have took sitting down, but it's not. You know what this presentation reminded me of? A timeshare presentation. It looks pretty in a package.
You have thirty seconds, ma'am.
But it's not pretty when you go to book it. So my question to y'all is what are you going to do to fix it?
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, Ms. Hunter? Hey, Ms. Hunter? Ms. Hunter, what's your suggestion? What, what's the suggestion? Okay. Well, okay, I'm just curious about, you know, I would like to know the data. It's like how many, you know, where they were at twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, where we at twenty eighteen in the water?
The little old lady I talked to that was eighty-three that got an eleven-hundred-dollar bill, lives in a little bitty house. Had a plumber come out, there's no leaks.
Okay, well, all right. With a gentleman that was watering four days a week, I ran my, my sprinkler system two days and I saw two thousand gallons, and I stopped watering, so my grass is dead because...
Y'all pride yourself on making Halton City beautiful? But if somebody threw out a cigarette, Halton City would burn because all the grass is dead. Because we're scared to water.
I know, I stopped watering my yard because all of a sudden my, my water went up fi- a hun- fifty percent.
My, okay, I gave y'all a packet.
So I'm asking, what do you suggest that we fix it? So do we raise the property tax?
My question for you is, did you get the piece of paper? I understand that.
Okay, the water, we don't get it from free.
Did you get the piece of paper that I gave every council member?
Ma'am, and, uh...
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Where Fathom has faulty meters
Okay.
in Copper's Cove.
Yep, and they fixed them.
They fixed them, how about fixing ours?
Okay.
That's what I suggest.
Okay, whoa, 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 whoa. Well, in our charter, it, it does say that if you feel that your meter is inaccurate, we will pull it and we will run a test on it, but if we find that it's within two percent, then you pay for all that, so...
How many of y'all tested?
I don't know, um, I know...
How many have y'all tested?
I don't know.
I know of one that was tested and it was proved to be faulty.
Okay, and, and that, but there are mechanisms in there and there are policies in here to go and check it.
How about when they do come to Fathom and they tell them to pay it or they're going to turn it off? That's not customer service, that's not somebody that's willing to fix it.
I'm not here to argue.
I'm not either.
I'm here to looking for solutions.
Uh, me too.
Okay, and so there are, there are policies or there are items in the charter, in ordinance, that say how to rectify this. So if we have a meter that is inaccurate, we can pull it, put another meter in there and test it, and then if it's found that it's accurate, then the, then the, uh...
I have eight hundred people, would you pull their me- meter and check them?
I'm sure they would.
Because that's what we need.
Okay.
There's eight hundred copies right here of addresses that's gotten high bills, astronomical.
But if the bills, my meter was probably a newer meter, so I didn't really see much change. And so, um, but I know there is a lot of meters out there because I've talked to plumbers about it where they've had leaks, and then they look down at the meter and that meter's not spinning because the leak is not enough volume to spin the meter. And so that's water lost in the presentation that Mr. Phelps did.
And I understand that, and I get y'all were losing money. But I got a question, can I ask one question and then I'll walk off?
Okay, ma'am, because we have a long list.
Okay, just one question.
Yes.
It's my fault.
If Fathom, why would Fathom, as a company, come in here to lose money? Makes no sense to any of them.
Okay, but they're not going to lose money, okay?
Exactly.
They're a business, okay, but...
Exactly. I rest my case.
All right, but no, it, it's a, it's a multifaceted, um, problem that we're solving, okay? We are losing one point two ga- million gallons of water, okay? And so we are metering it now fif- every fifteen minutes. Now the website, hopefully, will get better because it's a day behind. I don't like the, the fact that it's a day lag. And so hopefully we'll have daily updates, so we can actually see, because now we're able to see if we are running water at three AM.
Oh, I have, and we're sound asleep.
Okay.
We run when we're at work, too.
Okay, well, there were some date issues there that I, I, I work on software, okay, so...
There's always glitches, I can...
So my guess is the date, date and times were being stored in what's called Greenwich Mean Time or Universal Time Code or UTC. So that's London, and so it's about six, seven hours off.
Why would, uh, tech, or United States company go with the London time?
Because that's how you do it in databases, okay? When you, when you construct databases, you do things with...
Well, I'm not a business person and I can't give you a solution.
All right, we're done.
But what I can say is no company can come in.
Thank you so much, let, let us say this way. Please? Thank you. We have a long list of people want to talk. I think the council need to cut a little bit shorter. Listen to the problem. Then I want Fetham and the staff get a resolve of what the people complained. Then we might have another town hall meeting and tell you what happened to, like, Mr. Hunter complained about that. Better than right now, just one-on-one, we will stay here until midnight, okay? Uh, it's okay? Yes. Uh, now I wa- I would like to invite Mrs. Susan, now. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, the third one, Mr. Thomas Iyana, do I say correctly? Thomas, Mr. Thomas Iyana?
I think it's Iyara. Sure, Iyara?
Iyara, I'm sorry, Iyara.
Thomas Ibarra. Thomas Ibarra?
If not, uh, Mr. Susan, no. Thank you, ma'am, sorry about that.
Hello, I have been a resident of Halton City almost my whole entire adult life. Um, we moved here because it was affordable. Cost of living had gone up quite a bit over the years, I'm on disability. The water bill has not been a problem with me yet. I am terrified of watering my yard, hearing all these other horrible stories. Um, those that have high water bill, I would suggest to replace those smart meter with another smart meter because there are, there are faulty things in everything we buy. Um, I hope a lot of this gets resolved. Um, I have never seen so many yellow yard in my entire life here in Halton City, it's terrible. I've got trees that are dying, I've lost a lot of grass. And I love Halton City and the people that live here because we are family and we need your help.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one, I would like to invite Mrs. Annette Curry. Would you please, ma'am, thank you? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, my name is Annette Curry, I live at twenty-nine twelve Phil Street. Excuse me, I'm concerned about why we cannot get our bills on the same day each month. In other words, I pay my electric bill, I know exactly when my electric bill is going to come, and I get it three weeks before it's due. My cable, my phone, Atmos, all my bills are on a due date. At, this water company is not, for instance. I had one due two-twenty-two. Less than a month later, I had one that was due three-seventeen. Month, less than a month later, my bill was due four-twenty-one. Then, less than a month later, it was due five-twelve. So we're not even getting thirty days between our billing and due dates. I understand that, uh, the due date should be twenty days after. I would, I would like to them understand if this is all computerized or whatever, why they can't read the meters on a cer- certain day, same day, and get our bills thirty days later and I know when my bill is coming due. For instance, um, six-fifteen to seven-thirteen, I have all my bills here and they read it on two-twenty-three, and then they read a different date. So why are they reading it on a different date every month and I don't have thirty days, I get two bills in one month? Why can't we have our bills due like the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, just like all of our other utilities? Thank you.
On, on some of these questions, you know, we might be able to shed a little bit of light, so I, I, that's what I want to try to do. The, uh, let me just tell you that during the transition, when we were first moving out of the old meters into the new meters, there was a time period there that where we were trying, nobody got billed for too many days. You might have, you might have had more than, uh, the bills that you wanted in a, you know, three and six weeks or two, or four, eight weeks or whatever, or two, two close together. But remember, there's four billing cycles. The reason for that is we were taking the old system off, putting the new system in. They came to us, Fathom came to us and said, okay, how are we going to do this? We don't want to send too many bills in a row, even though they're not overpaying. They said, well, the alternative is, is that we just do this transition and then they get one big bill and maybe two, two and a half months later. We said, no way, because we realized people are on a fixed income. We had rather of them get bills instead of one gigantic bill two months or three months later because sometimes people might not, um, uh, you know, plan for that and see that, and then they have this bill that's twice as much of even more than what they, that they seen as far as the increase in, uh, the water usage being me- measured accurately. We didn't want that. So that was part of that problem during that time period. Now, the reason that we have four billing cycles is because, well, not one, is because we, we can't hire that many employees to service on cutoff days, cut-on days, the rest of the next twenty-eight days, they'd be sitting around twiddling their thumbs. We, a city this size, like all cities, we have billing cycles. And if you may be in billing cycle one, billing cycle two, three or four, it's way more complicated than you might think. Now, the, the other thing is, is that we, part of that reason is, is that we said we're going to give twenty days for paying. And part of that is because we've had some issues with people getting bills with our local post office, and I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but, but we've had that issue, so we don't want just fifteen days, we wanted to give twenty days. The other thing was, is that, like, uh, uh, Mr. Bethke said earlier, is that we want cutoff days to be on a Wednesday, and, and those days follow different dates because we didn't want people to be in a situation where they cannot have water over the weekend. And, and so you say, well, you know, you can hire crews after hours and on the weekends, uh, to do this, but, but then you're paying, we're trying to run this as efficiently as possible, then you're paying overtime for crews for people that, you know, either couldn't or didn't pay their bills. And so, so we're trying to do this thing where it's a balance right now. So what we decided to do was, whether, if you'll go on the website, you can find it... We put a billing calendar out. You can see what billing cycle you're on. And you can look and, and it'll tell you six months, uh, is it six months or a year out? Say what? Okay, so it's through January and February of next year and then a new one will come out pretty soon before that. So you can always look at that calendar and know when your bill is gonna be due. So that problem, remember, during the transition, you're gonna have issues that come up in, in something this large, this, this scale. But you'll see that that will start settling out. And you may not know the exact date, but if you're on a certain billing cycle, you'll know that between, you know, and I'm just throwing out dates, so don't mind me, between the first and the fifth, my bills due. Some other bodies might be, uh, between the twelfth and the fifteenth, my bills due. So it'll get, it's gonna get, it'll get better and better and better, but we had to get through this cycle. But that's the reason why there, that those dates change from time to time. And they're about thirty days apart. And some of them, they're for a little while. We're not thirty days apart. So that's, that's kinda where we are. Do what? Yeah, was it twenty-eight? Okay, it's between twenty-five and thirty-five days on each billing cycle. Okay. Alright, well, the billing, the billing calendar, so if you wanna know what it is, you can look online and it'll be on there. So we're, we are working through those issues and those, and so that'll get better in time.
Thank you sir.
We're getting your calendar.
It's on the website. Yeah, we got it here.
Is it on the Fathom website or?
It's the city website.
Yes sir. Thank you, and, uh, I would like to invite Mrs. Lilian Psycho. Thank you ma'am.
My name is Lilian Psycho and I am a area parent of disability. I will not pay on time on my bill, because my social security comes in at a third of each month. I will not get it the first month. I don't see how they can't cut off on my water bill if my social security won't get here on time.
Thank you ma'am. I would like to advise Mr. Tom O'Neill. Would you please come on? Welcome sir.
I spoke to the last council member, you probably remember me, about this issue. I just had a couple of questions. If, uh, I know electricity's gotta be higher than water. My electricity bill and gas bill alone don't amount to half of what my water bill is. How do you explain that?
How, how much you water bill sir?
Water bill this month?
Yeah.
Two hundred dollars. I'm one person, I'm in a two-bedroom house. And one other thing, if Fathom's such a great company, I've did research for them. They got problems everywhere. You've been turned into a better business girl several cities, several cities. I've done a lot of research on them. Everywhere y'all are, there's troubles. And that's, I just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you sir.
Yeah, Mr. O'Neill, hold on a second. You did show up at the last council meeting and if you recall, the council asked me to look into your specific problem. So can you hear me okay? I know last time you were having trouble hearing me. What you, what you said at the last meeting is you made several, um, statements. One of them was that you, you talked about a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar water bill. And you said you're afraid your water bill is fixing to go to three-hundred dollars a month. So, I sat down with our Director of Customer Service the next day. You also said, uh, one thing too, that your, that your meter was running all the time even though when you were asleep.
Yes sir, I've got a chart printed out. This has got me using eighty-eight to ninety-two, three gallons when I'm asleep at twelve AM. They tell me the meters are three hours a night.
I pulled your history from July first to July tenth, okay? I looked at every single hour that your meter was running. You had eighty-six hours between July first and July tenth where your meter read zero. Eighty-six hours is three-point-five-eight days.
It should be more than that.
So of the ten days that I pulled, three and a half of those days, your meter was not running. So...
Cause I quit watering my yard for one thing.
Well, no sir, no sir, I can, I can tell you when you water your yard, because that's what the meter does, is it measures your usage. So, I just wanted to, to assure you that I looked into it and like I said, out of ten, out of a ten-day period, I looked at, three and a half days, your meter was not running. So it's not running during the night.
I try to keep it from running now.
Do what?
I try to keep it from running now. I have to.
Well, yeah, it's, it's not running. And then this is the period that you were, you, you said, I think you, you were gonna have a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar water bill. So, just to let you know.
That's right.
This is an example of what Sedona and her ex has been doing as far as following up with people, so...
I have one quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
If, uh, if all these water bills, water meters were bad all these years, I've lived here for twenty-five years. If they were bad all them years, Holtsom City wouldn't even be existing if they lose money for twenty-five years.
We have been losing money for that.
Why not replace the meters instead of going to a Fathom company? Why not just replace the old meters with new ones?
That's what we did. It was, it's a meter replacement leak detection program.
No, you went to these smart meters. They're not like the old meters.
Exactly, they're smart meters. Just like Jason explained to you.
They're very dumb.
These are more accurate.
Thank you. Now I would like to invite, uh, Mr. Trey Fowler. Would you come in here? Welcome.
Welcome Dr. Trong. Um, Councilman Gro, to help you out, what I would recommend doing. Um, of course, I'm no longer on there and I'm sure that there's plenty that are happy about that. But, uh, the reason that I'm here is to help straighten out some of this mess. I voted for it, uh, probably was a bit misguided in some of the things, the rollout. I don't know, I watched the, the meeting that your wife put on the, and I believe I asked questions for thirty-two minutes. I think you asked one question, Dr. Trong asked one question. That was it. Asked for thirty-two minutes. There's a lot of questions and y'all are probably all aware that when the door's shut and all that, I'm the one that asked for, you better think about the rollouts. You better think about all this stuff. So if you want suggestions, I've got some suggestions here for you. Starting off, I'd like to ask the city manager, does the water loss factor, usage, does it, does it assume that the city facilities are under the same? Out of that two million gallons you were talking about, Mr. Phelps? Let's direct to the city manager though.
I don't understand your question. What do you say?
Do we bill ourselves at the city for this, for the rec center sprinklers, for the water, the spray park? Do we, does the city bill itself?
No.
So, in other words, out of that two million gallons, that's more than likely where a lot of that water's going. We're watering facilities, we're running buildings, uh, people using the restrooms. We got, I believe I was at the parks board meeting, joint parks board meeting, and there was, what, ten thousand gallons a day estimated loss or usage at the spray park? Is that correct? So...
The, ha, ten, ten million gallons a day?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand gallons a day?
Is that correct, Mr. Gro? Is that about the number?
I believe that was what the estimate was.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, in other words, that's not the citizens' fault. But yet, the citizens are having to recover or pay for part of that loss also. So you're, in other words, you know, I don't know if we thought about that, but we're, you know, we're saying that there's X amount of gallons that are lost in leak detection and all this. And I understand that. I was told a big part of the pitch. But, I don't know that that's quite an accurate number. Simply because, if we're not metering our own water usage, we're watering all these fields. We have North Park, we have the rec center, we have Little Fossil. We have all the city facilities that are being sprinkled and used. And yet we have the spray park and yet, you know, that's not factored into it?
Yeah, that's a second sir.
Unless someone would, unless someone would like to defer, um...
You made a comment that we're not metering the water. If we're not metering the water, it's not gonna show up on that chart. That's, that's the, that's the water that's captured through the meters.
Okay, so that's, so we're saying that, that, so who pays for the water, then, that's coming out of the city facilities? These people? Okay. Um, another, and that's, you know, like I say, I don't know how we're able to differentiate between sewer that comes from the city facilities. If it runs down to a main meter station, you can't differentiate this facility from my house. It's all sewer water. So that's part of your loss also. Um...
Your argument doesn't make sense.
Okay, well...
Because, yeah, your, your, your argument makes no sense.
Allow, allow me to, allow me to jump around for a minute if you don't mind.
I think your time's up.
Is my time up? Are you, are you, I'm sorry, are you mayor pro temp? Is my time up or the city manager said it was?
Well, uh, everybody, everybody have three minutes sir.
Okay, that's fine. Would you, would you, would you like for them to defer to me?
Well, at the beginning, we didn't have that rule yet.
Uh, that, Dr. Trong, that's, that's, that's okay. I, no, no, hey, that's alright, no problem. I'll step back, but I'll be at the next budget meeting, um, to answer any questions.
If someone want to give up three minutes, you can talk sir.
Okay. Um, what, okay, has there been any?
Hang on, sir. What's your name ma'am? Which one?
Don't start my clock yet, Dr. Trong.
You need shell?
Yes. Go ahead sir.
Okay, quickly, um, has there been any consideration for the, for the, the revenues that are experienced from this, from Fathom? If we're now recapturing all this, why don't, why do we need to increase the water? We were told last year when I was a council member that we didn't project any water increases this year. Now we're projecting a four-and-a-half percent water increase. Um, we passed the sewer deal with City of Fort Worth. Uh, you can shake your head, Mr. Manager, but I was at the meetings, I know.
Well, I'm gonna correct you when you, when you don't tell the truth.
Uh, okay.
We did not, we did not ever say that we were not gonna wa- raise water rates this year.
There was, there was a proposed zero increase this year and then deferred to next year.
No sir, what you're talking about is a wastewater contract. That was not this year.
I know my numbers.
What you're talking about is a wastewater contract and that was not this year.
If you don't mind, this is a debate between, uh, um, has there been any consideration for reimbursement to the citizens of savings? That's something, you know, you ask what you can do. I would recommend asking Fathom, asking the council, the staff to get in a room and close the door and get it fixed and figure out what you need to do to get this fixed. You're asking us, I mean, part of the things that you could do is, in two thousand and four, there was a drainage utility fee or tax that was placed on our, on our water bills involuntarily. It was done by ordinance, the city council did it. Y'all have the opportunity, the option to remove that. That's completely y'all's option. Y'all can do it by ordinance Monday night if you get it on the agenda. That's y'all's choice. Um, there was a comment made and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say quickly though, uh, our water department, David Cummins, a lot of the guys that are working in there. I know Rex and Sedona have worked extremely hard. Uh, this is not a bang on them, this is not a deal. There's a problem here and it needs, the doors need to be shut and it needs to be fixed. You know, and that's as simple as it is. I don't care how long it takes, go eat breakfast, get in there and get it fixed. You know, you, but you asked for questions, Mr. Gro. That's not our position to provide the answers. That's you guys. You guys got elected. Y'all are the board of directors and that's y'all's job.
Okay, but, okay, would you say that if the meter is correct, so let's say the meters are correct, that they're now in the ground and they're metering correctly? And, and so people should pay the water that they consume, correct?
That's an assumption that they're metering correctly.
Well, let's say the meters are correct. Let's, okay, well, let, let's go with this fictitious, okay? But, and so if, so...
Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
Okay, I'm having a conversation.
You have your turn ma'am. Would you please ma'am?
Okay, and so let's say the meters are correct and, cause, cause I looked at my, all of a sudden, like I said earlier, my water bill went up fifty bucks. And it's because of me sprinkling my yard. And so I have ceased and desist that. But, if they're correct, they're correct. And so should people pay for what they consume? Yes or no?
Yes, you should pay for what you consume, assuming they're correct. But, now here's the thing, was there something taken into consideration that if there was gonna be a capture of revenue that came back to the city? Why do we need, allow me to finish please. Allow me to finish. If there was a capture of revenue and all of a sudden now we had all these meters that have been so bad for so long, which I disagree with, because I know that our water department's done a better job and I know they've replaced meters throughout. Now, they may not read quite as accurately, but I guarantee the percentage of loss is not what we're experiencing right now. You don't see this many people here if there's not a problem. I can assure you. So, was there, is there any thought about going back and saying, you know what, instead of a four percent or four-and-a-half percent, why do we need to do that? If now we're reading the meters accurately, why don't we look at, at a revenue or a surplus refund?
Well, I would say that we're not even in a surplus, because we're already, we're always in the hole, because the system is not self-funded. That's why we're, we went to this, uh, smart meter system, so we would be able to have accurate readings and then bill for what people are consuming. And so, once maybe when we get hole, if we are running a surplus, maybe then we can look at not increasing the water rates as high. But, you know, we're always gonna have to pass through what Fort Worth charges us, because we are always on the hook to Fort Worth.
Okay, you went to a third party, you went to a third-party provider. They're gonna make money. City's still gonna make money. So now we've added another layer in there. Well...
We're at a loss.
Councilmember Gro, I, I beg to differ.
Are we, we're, we're at a loss, correct?
We're at a loss when you consider we can't fund the capital projects that we need.
When you can't fund the capital projects, you're still not at a revenue loss. You know, we, that you can, you can, you can mince these words and you can make all this stuff look and sound great for either side. But the whole deal is...
Okay, okay.
That the, the whole deal is, is we're still, there's a problem here, whether it's metering, what the situation is, no matter what it is. It needs to be looked at and we're capturing more revenue than we were before.
Okay, Councilman Fowler, you and I attended...
I'm no longer Councilman Fowler. Thank you though.
Okay, but no, I always address, uh, Councilwoman Hilliard as Councilwoman.
I'm, I'm just Mr. Fowler and our trace.
Well, you and I attended a lunch with Aaron, oh, I can't remember Aaron's last name, and some gentleman from Georgia talking about outsourcing.
Yes sir.
And so this is all part of outsourcing. So this is, you know, looking at ways that we can make government more efficient, correct?
And that's what we were told.
Yeah, well, that, we were all for it.
Uh, no doubt. Based on the information that I was given.
Okay, and, and right now, we're at the very beginning of this process with Fathom. Well, I, 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 well, if the meters are running accurately... Okay, well, okay, okay, whoa, 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 let me finish, let me finish. Okay, so if we look at, okay, if we look at section nine-eight dash five-one meter testing. So we can, we have a provision in our city charter, that is, the meters are inaccurate. You can go and have them, request for have them to tested. And then if they are, um, if a patron complains of charges for water supplied him and if he demands, well, this should be gender neutral, but demands, uh, the, the meter supplying his premises to be tested, the city water and sewer department may remove and test the meter. And if it is found that the meter does not register in, in error, uh, more than two percent fast, the consumer shall pay such amount as established by the city for making the test and no adjustment of the charges shall be made. If however, the meter should register more than, uh, two percent fast, the consumer shall pay no fee for such test and the water and sewer department shall make appropriate adjustments in the water service charges. Okay, so there are provisions in the charter. So if people feel that their meters are inaccurate, the city will pull them and we will test them. And if they come in within two percent, either way, either the, the citizen's gonna pay or the city's gonna pay. And then have that water, uh, bill adjusted.
Here, here, here's the, here, here's the thing.
Ms. Fowler.
I'll wrap it up if I can.
I think your time over, unless somebody want to give up your time and let me know.
About thirty seconds.
Okay sir, go ahead.
You, you have, just like we said, there's, there's a stormwater utility or drainage utility, you're taxed or you're feed, whether it rains or not. We're in a drought, you're taxed or feed no matter what. I came to the council a month ago and I just made the suggestion. All I'm doing is making a suggestion once again. These people want it, you know? Uh, I have, there's a commercial customer that was out here earlier, he's paying forty dollars a month, forty-one dollars a month, been doing it since two thousand and four. Okay? Uh, that generates one-point-eight-two million dollars annually, as Mr. Phelps said. That's a hundred-and-fifty-five, fifty-six thousand, a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand about, in the ballpark a month. Look at that as a council. Look at that about refunding that. That's one thing they're asking for. You, there's gotta be some, if we're, if we're all of a sudden capturing this and, and they've got eight hundred signatures in, in three days, there's a problem. So all I'm recommending is, I would get in there, I would shut the doors and I would figure out how to get it fixed. And if you would like more suggestions, I, anytime, I'll have a dialogue.
Miss Fowler, thank you, your, your time.
Now, um, David just stepped out, I just, I just wanted to say that, that I and Sedana have gone out with David and we've tested lots of meters. We'll be more than happy to come test meters anytime anybody wants. We do a, a, a test in front of the, uh, homeowner with them. Uh, Mr. Kaiser is a perfect example, he's here tonight. He'll let you know, we, we spend the time there, we do the calculations and we will let you know if that, there've been times that we changed the meter even though it was working right, just to help gain confidence. And we tested that meter too. So, we haven't found, and I'm not saying there's not one out there, but we have not found one yet that I know of, uh, of the new meters that have, have been faulty or that have not tested accurately. I'm just saying we just haven't seen that so far. That doesn't mean there's not one out there, so you call us, you call me and we'll come test it and we'll test it right in front of you, you can be part of it. Part of the ways that we do that is we take a picture of it before we test it after all the water's off. And then we'll, we'll run water, we measure the gallons right in front of you, after it's over, we take another picture of it. And so far, they've been right on the money. We can also, if you want, we can, we can, if you run your, ever sprinkler systems a little different, we, we can run your sprinkler system and tell you just exactly how much water your sprinkler system's putting out. We've had people that went from twenty minutes to ten minutes, you know, and, and you get to judge that. So for the first time ever, you do have a real significant way, if you use a system, to help, to help control your water consumption, if you so choose, so. So, I just wanted y'all to know that we are testing these meters and we'll come test yours if you'll just give us a call.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you know, uh, I don't mean to cut anybody off after three minutes because it's not fair for people how waiting and we have a long list, so you have to understand that, please, and, yeah.
Councilman, Rex.
Rex, Rex, Rex. Please, Rex, can you please, uh, I heard a couple people asking the cost of the test, can you address that? No charge at all for the test, all right, thank you.
Okay, uh, the next person, who would I, Mr. Darren Hudson, would you come here, sir? Welcome here, thank you.
Again, I'll express my same concerns, it's not for my water bill, it's for the seniors in this town and the, the families that have single incomes that can't afford to pay three, four, five and eight hundred dollar water bills. That needs to be our concerns. The, it was mentioned earlier that every single meter in the city was replaced. And I wanna ask the city manager or Rex, was every meter replaced?
All the, all the, all the registers were replaced, all the radios were replaced, there were some meters that were new and were left in place.
Is it true that the people that are not having problems still have Badger meters in the ground and not Neptune meters?
No, I don't think that's true.
Because not every meter was replaced. The Badger meters that the city's been replacing for the last six to ten years were left in the ground, is that correct? Okay, so, we're, they're not all new meters, cause that's what y'all said a while ago. The answer to that question is, they're not all new meters. They replaced the head units. So if we would've had this major loss of water, which as Trey brought up a while ago, a lot of that water's being used within the city because our annual water loss report would've showed that we were losing more than ten percent and we would've had to report that to the T E C, is that correct? T E C Q. So it's not lost? So it's being used by the city, it's not lost and it's not running through people's meters without.
Adjustments between, knock down the city meters, that's factored into that number that you see right there that they showed you earlier.
Right.
Fifty percent, the main breaks and all the other stuff, that's factored into the water loss too. That's, that's a guess, because we can't factor, when a main break happens, we don't know exactly what we're lost.
Absolutely.
So, but the meter, what it is, is the, the, when we buy water from Fort Worth, total amount of water meter from Fort Worth versus the metered accounts and the city accounts, all systems, all together, it's a subtraction of the two. And you have a difference and we try to, as far as public works goes, we try to monitor how much water we're using. And if the main breaks, flushing, what do we do, we try to do that.
So what is that number, that number, if that, y'all are calculating that number, what is that number? I think everybody would like to know that because I don't think we're losing a million gallons a year. I think that. Ninety-two million gallons?
Operationally, I'm just gonna throw this in my back end because I don't have a front here right now. We lose between twenty and thirty, maybe forty million gallons a year due to main breaks, theft. There's a lot of things that are going on and I'm, you know, when they say out that theft, they're, they're just trying to give you, how the actual water, the water's going. They don't know because they don't own your house. They're just trying to give you ideas, you know, the stuff that you need to look for. When I go to your house, I can tell, you got a meter leak, you got a irrigation leak, you got tools flushing, I found a bunch of these. Some of the people that are in this room right here, I went to the house and found these.
How many of the meters were tested before we removed them? Do you know what the percentage was of how much wa- water was being lost through the meters? I, I know we, you do have them, cause I, I, I have.
No, I, I don't, I'm just telling you I do.
Right, it was less than four percent? On, on a majority of the meters that were tested.
Uh, we'll have to keep going, Miss Hudson.
When, when the council looked at Fathom, obviously they were given, uh, some bad information. When the council looked at, at Fathom, I feel like they were not given all the information, uh, with the problems that Fathom had already had. And they were, some of the things that, uh, that have came up was that Kennedale was not listed on their list of references, which is the closest city to us that does use Fathom. And they were withheld from their reference list because they went through the same issues that we're going through right now. The very same issues. And if you'll look at the city of Kennedale, they have a new city manager and a complete new council, that's all I have.
Thank you. Miss Hudson, so a, a little bit longer because every time I step, jump in here, I will pause his time, that's why, you know, somebody maybe complain and say over three minutes, okay? Next one, I would like to invite Bob Hall, would you please come in here, sir? Thank you.
I brought my dictionary just in case I needed it. About a fee or a tax or a service. And on my water bill, I have a storm drainage surface for six, service for six dollars and eighty-one cents. I saw part of, on the, the, the TV a while ago, that part of the sewer is going into the storm drain. I'd like somebody to explain that to me, I, I don't, I didn't quite get that. But I did, I did get, um, uh, your bulletin from the last month and it told me all about storm ser- storm drainage, but it didn't tell me about what you were doing with it and why we were being charged for a service. Maybe you could explain that. One other thing about Fathom, I pay my bill online through my own bank, it takes seven days. My bank has to write a check to Fathom before it can be paid. That's the only, that's the only bill I pay that has to be paid that way. Well, when I send money to the church, I do that and, and it takes five days. But with Fathom, it takes seven days if there's a weekend. If your system is so up to date and technologically hip, uh, they need to update some of that payment system.
Thank you.
My storm, my storm drain, drain service question. I saw where it's six dollars and eighty-one cents, I just moved here three years ago from North Richland Hills, it was three dollars over there. Um, I'd like to know what the variation in the difference is.
Miss Fowler.
I was gonna ask for Rex to come do that, but, Mr. Hall, I don't want your address in public, may I have your address so I can?
Fifty-seven twenty Starlight Drive.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. I didn't put my ears in, so I have a little trouble hearing, but that's a.
I appreciate it.
I did that on purpose.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions, sir?
Yeah, the storm drain charge, I'd like to have, I'd like to have that issue explained to me and maybe others would too. And, and, and I brought my dictionary so I could figure out what a service is.
Correct. Go ahead, sir.
Well, the, the, the fee is paid for the drainage department in the city, which takes care of your personnel, that takes care of the equipment and, and again, it's cleaning out the drainage system, things like that. I got the public works director that can explain that more. Uh, as far as the drainage fee, that's common with cities, uh, and it, you know, it ranges between the different needs of the city. For example, Fort Worth drainage, storm utility drainage fee is ten dollars and eighty cents for residential. Um, we've got, uh, five dollars and sixty cents in Plano, uh, we've got up to ten forty-eight in Irving, uh, five seventy-five for Fairview, Texas, uh, Dallas charges thirteen ninety-one. Uh, and, and North Richland Hills charges two twenty-two. And so, uh, but I've got smaller ones here too, um, Louisville, four dollars. We just, we just, we sent out a thing, uh, 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 asking people to respond to us today because we anticipated that question might come up. Uh, we have four dollars and eighty-two cents from Garland, uh, four dollars in McKinney, uh, Saxon is a couple dollars. Uh, and it's Flower Mountains, four dollars and thirty-five cents, those are the ones that responded to us. So I'm just telling you that drainage fees are commonly in water bills and that's how they pay for drainage department. So that service fee is the drainage for your city, as far as paying for the drainage departments and equipment and the cleanouts and things like that. But the public works director might be better at answering that question and why we need drainage.
Go ahead, Miss.
I'll just briefly explain what the six dollar eighty-one cent fee goes towards. Uh, the main thing that it goes towards is the drainage division. The city has a five-person division in the public works department and their task is to clean out the drainage channels, clean out the storm drain system throughout the city. It funds the personnel costs, it funds their equipment to do that. The other thing that the drainage fee is set up to do, when we do a street reconstruction project, we try to pay for the paving and the subgrade out of the general fund, the water and sewer replacement out of the water and sewer fund and any drainage improvements that are needed, replacing the pipes underneath the ground, curb inlets out of the drainage fund. However, the drainage fund, even at collecting six dollars and eighty-one cents per residential customer and, and a different amount for commercial fees, and I say different amount because it's actually a commercial fee, it's faired on based on how much area they have that's concreted, that's paved. So, commercial accounts pay substantially more than residential accounts. But, when we construct, reconstruct a street, there is never enough money to pay for the storm drainage improvements on a street, even at six dollars and eighty-one cents per residential customer. So the general fund ends up subsidizing drainage construction on the street. Are there any other questions regarding where that fee goes towards?
Mr. Hall, uh, are you satisfied with the answer from Greg? Can you hear me, sir?
The fee goes towards paying personnel, equipment, and when we reconstruct streets, it goes towards the drainage improvements that are in the street.
I wonder why they don't say that in this little pamphlet and, 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 and it's called a service. I don't know what my, if it's a tax, why don't you just tell me it's a tax?
In our water on Starlight goes down the street, into Fossil Creek.
Yeah, it says right here, we go, it goes into Little Elm and to Big Fossil. What, where, where is the service that's involved in getting it to, you know, I know there's, up across Glenview, there's a drainage ditch. I guess that's where part of it goes.
The personnel that cleans out that drainage ditch and the other drainage channels throughout town, they're being funded from that fee. Why it's called a service, I don't have an answer for you.
Digging along the side of the Denton Highway to get that water from down Denton Highway to, uh, Carson and on down into the river.
Correct, those city employees, correct, that's how they're funded.
Yes, sir, ma'am, yes, sir, if you have more question, uh, later on, you can talk to him. Right now, I need to move on to the fourth person, please. I would like to invite Mr. Teresa DePaul. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name's Teresa DePaul and I live at, um, five, six, three, two, Straightaway Drive. Okay, I'm a native Texan, uh, but I spent twenty-eight years in Denver and I decided to come home in two thousand fifteen. I chose Halton City, I hope I didn't make a mistake. I don't have a complaint, okay, I just have a couple of comments. You did test my meter and you reduced my bill, I, I appreciate that. I've worked very closely with Tracy with my two complaints. My one complaint was, I'm on auto pay, my bill was seventy dollars and fourteen cents, I'm nervous, and auto pay took out seventy dollars and thirteen cents. I was a penny behind. I was overdue. I was afraid you were gonna turn off my water. And I was afraid you were gonna charge me to turn it back on, okay? The other thing is, I had, uh, I received a bill in May, eighty-something dollars on one day. And Tracy backs me up and we're all good. And I, I'm still on auto pay. I had an eighty-dollar bill one day and then the very next day I got another eighty-dollar bill. And then, the very next day, I got a thing saying, thank you so much for your payment, okay? And one bill wasn't due for another thirty days. So basically, you broke the law, okay, you took money out of my account that wasn't yours. It was fixed, it got fixed. So I'm here to say, Fathom, I don't trust you at all, I don't even like you, but you cer- you certainly, any problem, any problem that I have brought, okay, up and I validated and I documented and I showed, okay, that you're wrong. They said they were wrong and they fixed it, okay? But you had to prove it without, beyond a shadow of a doubt, okay, so that's what I have to say. My other thing is I would like to propose, I pay one dollar a month for, uh, the animal shelter's water. I was wondering, is there any way to do that for the disabled neighbors who cannot pay these bills? And I don't know how to tier that and I don't know how to distribute that, but I'd be more than happy to pay. And if there's fourteen thousand, thirteen thousand accounts, fourteen thousand accounts, let's say ten thousand people wanna give a dollar a month, that's ten thousand dollars. And that could help a disabled person.
Oh, thank you so much. I think a good idea, let our staff look in at, uh, about your, uh, you know, propose for the handicap or the people can afford to pay. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. The next person I would like to invite, Ms. Dory Thornton. We just moved over half of the list, okay? Uh, welcome here, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm a resident of Halton City, Fossil Beach, seven, six, one, three, seven. Uh, we have been residents, my husband and I, for more than twelve years. We always pay our bills on time, um, but we noticed that after the meters, uh, I used to pay fifty something and we do have a sprinkler. Then it went up and up and up and my last one was close to two hundred dollars. We, uh, realized we have one leak in our combo. We fixed it, we replaced it with a new one, we replaced this, we have a problem with the faucet, we fixed that. Well, the next bill was higher than that. So, I wait to talk to Thornton, but I couldn't go anywhere. Um, I needed to pay the bill, that's what the meter reads and that is what I needed to pay. So, okay, um, someone told me, well, if I go to, uh, the city of Fort Worth, probably I'm gonna get a credit. If I show all the repairs. Well, I didn't know that, that would be nice. And then, let's see if my bill stay stable after that. If the meters work, fine. Now, that's my only concern. We know, we are professionals, we under- We understand, we are business minded, the majority of us are business minded. We understand, and this is my suggestion, and this is my statement. We understand that you are a business, that you need to run a business, all right? And you might have trouble, like any other business, your funds are low, et cetera. But you need to realize that you're dealing with a community that is changing every day and every year. You're now dealing with forty-five percent Hispanic minorities. Your community is now minority and elderly.
You have thirty seconds, ma'am.
All right? So, this is the problem. When you close door, decide for, we're going to hire somebody for this, we're going to hire somebody for that, you do a close door, but you don't realize you are community servants. You need to involve the community on this. And we now are more involved than ever, and we want to be involved from now on. This is a moment to see your faces. Now, we see your faces. Who are the one that make decision for us instead making decisions together? We, this is just my statement.
Ma'am, your time is over.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. The next one, I would like to invite Mr. Montgomery, Melanie? Montgomery?
Melanie Montgomery.
Yeah. Welcome.
My name is Melanie Montgomery. I took some notes while Phantom and Rex was talking. I read on the Halton City website that y'all said this was going to be great for citizens. This has not been great for the citizens. On Phantom's website, it says Halton City is pairing up with them, and they, Phantom is a company to recover lost revenue. So, that's where that statement came from, of recovering lost revenue. As others have stated, other cities have adopted this same process and have the same problems over and over again. So, they've had to exchange faulty meters, reimburse customers. It's all on city news websites. The city and Phantom are telling people that they're stealing water, that their neighbors are stealing water. I can't believe that somebody would say that. Even if it was true, that's the only suggestion, is that, oh, you're using that much water, or your neighbors are stealing it. The billing dates are inconsistent. Phantom said they weren't, they didn't have a bill due within the same month. There's two or three months in the next six months that you have bills, two bills due in the same month. The rate increases, Phantom said, they're going to delay the rate increases. So, this rate increase that y'all have coming up, are they going to delay that for y'all and not give us a rate increase? The city was not transparent on this whole process. I think if maybe y'all would have came to the citizens and said, hey, this is what's going on. This is why we're doing this. We're not charging y'all, y'all are doing, y'all are having this much water, and we're only charging you for this much. Something, but the city was not transparent on that. When, we've talked to a lot of residents, and when they call about these high bills, especially the lady with eleven hundred dollar one, sorry, pay it, not our problem, your problem. That's not right. Especially eleven hundred dollars, that's outrageous. Phantom said, y'all have eight million dollars financed, that's not free. That's financed, somebody's got to pay it.
You have thirty seconds, ma'am.
Okay. Phantom said the bill consumption was only up ten percent. My bill, my bill consumption from last year, from June, July last year to this year, is three hundred and forty-nine percent up. So, if it's a faulty meter that y'all had before, and y'all replaced them, those numbers are not correct. Phantom said average rating was nine point three percent. Google reviews show they got a one point one star out of five. My bill went from one twenty-five a month to two hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month at a time.
Your time's up. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. The next one, I would like to invite Mr. Sandy Webb, I believe. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Sandy Webb at 5,005 Roundtree Court. Almost a lifelong resident. I got here as soon as I could, about fifty years ago. But my, the first thing that I want to say is that I thought Mr. Gross, I just, in my opinion, when you addressed Mary, I thought it was rather rude because she, she had expressed heartfelt feelings, and for you to come back and say, so what's your solution? We didn't come here to give you the solutions. We came here because you gave us problems, and we have to have a way to go back to you to, you know, fix what you started. One of the things that was addressed, the payment fee, I tried to pay online again, which I have done twice. This time, it sent me to a third-party payment, it started with a P, I can't remember. But it, I went down and filled in on the info to do an ACH check through my bank. And I'm familiar with the, you know, I understand the two-dollar service fee on a lot of these places. That's the courtesy they do, and I don't have, I don't begrudge people making their money. But the, when I, I finally called in because when I did that and sent me to there, it said, click here to hear about the, what you're accepting, and then make a check mark that you accept the payment. And so, when I did read the rules, it did not, first of all, tell me how much the fee would be. And it did not say, this applies only to you if you are paying by credit card. It didn't, it did not, you know, make a difference on the fact that I was writing a check. So, I finally called the customer service, and the young lady said, well, did you do the check? Yes, I did the check. We went through it together, did it again. I said, click, can you click on that? Can you read it? No, she actually had me take a picture of it and email it to her so she could give it to someone to look at. Because she couldn't, she didn't know what to do with it. So, she finally took my payment free of charge. I also, the month that I was, I was gone in June, the first two weeks in June, I was gone on vacation.
Yeah, thirty seconds, ma'am.
I'm one of those old people, widow ladies, that I work four jobs to help compensate my income, and I had a three hundred dollar water bill, and I was gone two weeks. So, never have I had one like that. I came home one day, and the little thingy, the cap with the two white dots was laying across the yard somewhere. I didn't know why, so I called them, they came out, and at some point, it got put back on my thing. And then, and then the other thing about the water that's bought from Fort Worth, I don't understand how your process works.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, let me finish my sentence. That, but if, if what we're buying from them, and then we're not recouping or whatever, what if that water's just not being used? So, there is a difference in what we bought versus what we paid in. Like I said, I don't know how it works. I just know that there's a lot of issues. We need your backup, your support, and you need to fix what you broke.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sandy, was that three hundred in June? Is that the month you said? Thank you.
My June bill, I had to split it up and pay two hundred because as a senior, they at least didn't charge me a fee, and I waited till I got the disconnect letter, and then I, and that gave me into my social security for July, or for August, so that I could pay that extra hundred dollars.
Thank you.
And I was gone two weeks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person would be Stacey Corbin. Welcome here, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Hi, Stacey Corbin, 4505 Nadine. And I wasn't really sure I was going to talk tonight, but there are some, just some quick things I want to touch on. One, the billing. What I don't understand, our trash crew, they have set days. They don't do the entire city in one day. They break it down. This neighborhood, these streets get done on this day, et cetera, et cetera. Why can that not happen with the meter reading, so that our billing is consistent? So, I think that's a big issue. Not only, when you have a twenty-five day billing cycle one month, you have a thirty day billing cycle the next month, nobody will ever be able to know what their bill is going to be. A lot of us, we plan our budget. Know what I mean? We have kids to take care of. We have elderly, we have disabled, we have a certain amount of money to work with every month. Sorry, I'm nervous, too. All right, the next thing I want to talk to, talk to you about is the ten percent, the supposed ten percent increase. You've heard multiple people here, their bills are not increasing by ten percent. Even with faulty meters in the past, there's a certain amount of water lossage. We're looking at people whose bills are increasing from fifty dollars to three hundred dollars. People whose bills are increasing from a hundred dollars to four, five hundred dollars. Not just isolated incidents. I mean, we're talking about multiple people, you have eight hundred signatures. That not only makes up for the amount of water lossage, that would more than triple it. I mean, so, so obviously, there's a problem with the billing. You understand what I'm saying? Somebody needs to look at, this is way more than a ten percent increase. I mean, we're talking about people who can't afford a four and five hundred dollar water bill. The gentleman, single gentleman, two-bedroom house, how is it even, I can't even fathom how he would have a three hundred dollar water bill? You looked at ten days, three days of that, there was no water usage. So, you're saying for twenty-four hours a day, for seven days, it showed he had water usage? We're talking about a single individual in a two-bedroom house. So, I mean, it just blows my mind. The woman with the eleven hundred dollar water bill, how is it okay that when we come to you, we call you, and we say, hey, how is our bill, five hundred dollars? What we're told is, well, that's what the meter says, pay it, or we're going to cut off your electricity. It should be your responsibility as a company who installs these to be willing to stand behind your meters and say, hey, let us check into that. And it should be your responsibility as the council members that we voted in. You're not here to benefit. Fathom, you're here to benefit us, we are your citizens. You are here to work for us.
You have a second, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person would be invite Mr. Charles Schell. Schell, sorry. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I moved here in 2001. I left the big city, I grew up in Dallas. I didn't like Fort Worth. I wanted somewhere away from all that garbage. So, when I found a home, what is the first thing that you ask? When you're buying a home, you ask the realtor, what are the taxes? What are the utilities? Oh, my house is a two-bedroom house, one bath, we only pay four hundred dollars a month for water. See ya. Food for thought, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to invite Mr. Robert Garcia. Will you be coming, sir? Welcome here.
Thank you. Robert Garcia, 4208 Biscayne Drive. Thank you, pro temp and city council members for this time, appreciate it. Most of my questions, not really questions, just opinions. I've been here for almost six years. I don't represent the majority, if you can see, most of the majority here are over fifty-five. My thing is, I plan to retire here in Halton City, but it seems like I'm being driven out with so many things that are changing so fast. It's not fair to the seniors here who've been here for so many years for them to be sitting here at this time, at their age, to address their concerns. Obviously, there's a concern, there's a problem. I'm not picking on anybody, you guys are doing your job, you're doing your job. But obviously, there's an issue. And I personally feel that for seniors who have worked all their life, and at this age, to be sitting here, there's an issue. Will it be get fixed? Who knows? All I know is that I've attended a few of these, and my question is, is anyone taking notes for these council meetings, for everything that is said, and will there be a follow-up so we can address these senior citizens? And even myself, I'm only fifty-seven, and I plan to be here for as long as I can. But if I know financially I cannot live here, then I have to move on. Like my wife and I, I came from New York City, the Harlem of New York City. I look for a better place. This is the better place that I found. I'm not knocking it, I love it to death. But we have to resolve some of these issues, and if I'm going to be seventy years old sitting here in twenty years, then do I really want to be here? All I'm saying is, let's resolve our issues. You guys are working hard, and I know no one means anything bad. We're trying to better the system. But at their age, sometimes we don't understand a lot of things. Make it more clear, be more transparent, let us know what's going on, and then follow up. That's all I'm asking, follow up. If those bills are eleven hundred dollars, follow it up. Hey, this is why. I'm not blaming anyone, but obviously, it's eleven hundred dollars. Whose mistake is it? Who knows? It could be a meter, it could be the water that you don't know is running, but at least some kind of follow-up. That's all I'm asking. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Next, I would like to invite Ronnie Strasser, if I pronounced your name correctly. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, my name's Ronnie Strasser, I live in Iron Horse West subdivision. I think city council person lives there, I believe the mayor lives there, and I believe the city manager lives there. Actually, he lives across the street from me, and I've been there since 2010. And I live alone. I used to have a dog, he passed away. I'm single, I have a three-bedroom house. I don't do a whole bunch of laundry or anything like that. But here recently, in the past six or seven months, I've had a couple of bills that have been really high, okay? One was consumption of fourteen thousand gallons in twenty days. Last month, for about a twenty-day period, I had twenty-six thousand nine hundred gallons, okay? And I did water my yard, but I follow the policy because the city manager lives across the street. When I open my front door, there he is. And he's a great guy, don't get me wrong, we're friends, okay? And the mayor lives in my subdivision, but I'm involved in heavy civil construction. I do stormwater utilities, I put in water systems, I install water lines, storm drains, and I've been doing it for forty-one years. So, when it comes to capital improvements and things of that nature, to fund rehabs on roadways with the drainage fee doesn't make much sense to me. You have to have a capital improvement fund, okay, to fund. But that's all, you know, city stuff that I really don't want to get involved in. But bottom line, I don't think one person, and I work six and seven days a week, so I don't spend much time at my house. I think Keith can attest to that. But to get twenty-six thousand gallon, so last week, I thought, well, you know what, I'm going to, I'm going to call a plumber. So, I called a plumbing company, they came out, they hooked a pressure gauge to the house, they turned off the meter, they checked every source inside the house, including the sprinkler system, for leaks. And they couldn't find any leaks. So, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's possible it could be leaking on the city side of the meter, you know? And then I'd be charged for that, I don't think that's possible. But either way, I love where I live, I love the community I live in, and I think this problem apparently needs to get addressed. Okay? Thank you for your time.
I would like to, the next one I would like to invite is Sandy Hunter. She might be not here. Sandy Hunter? Oh, welcome, ma'am. Did I not pronounce your name correctly?
No, I'm just sitting at the back, it took a minute to get here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I've been a Halton City resident probably, well, from the age of three, moved away for about five or six years. None of that really matters to anyone, I'm sure. But the fact of the matter is, I've been paying Halton City water for my adult life. And when the new meters went in, I did notice the water bill going up somewhat. I do water my grass, I do have flowers. Uh, I do water my grass. I do have flowers. Did. And it started out about ninety-eight and one thirty-two. I'm thinking, "That's cool." I mean, I'm using the water. That's fine. And I'm all about smart technology. Well, then when my, my first bill came, um, it was two fifteen. I'm thinking, "That doesn't seem right." And then I look at the usage, and then it went to two fifty-five. Well, the first thing I thought is, I'm gonna call Phantom and find out what, what's going on because at the time, they didn't have the website, the new website. I understand the old website didn't work very well. So I went into it, signed up. It shows the usages. And they mentioned, "Oh, you probably have a leak." That's interesting. My meter's been changed out. I had my house built twenty-one years ago. My meter's been changed out several times over the years, so I know I was paying for what I was using. But anyway, so they came, um, I went out, as soon as I got off of work, I went home, I shut my water off, and I noticed water was in the meter box. Thought, "Well, that is interesting." Never had water in the meter box. Nobody sprinkling. There's not raining. Go in the house, I checked everything I could imagine. There was nothing leaking. So I come back out to the meter, and I shut it back on. Back in the house for about thirty or forty minutes, and come back out, and sure enough, the box was filling up with some water. Well, what's interesting is that I didn't have a leak, till I got a new meter. And you know where the leak was? Right outside the box, on my side of the yard. I called a plumber, and they dug down, and sure enough, the connection that goes into the box outside the meter was leaking. Well, initially, I was told by Phantom, "You have a major leak." And, uh, then after I called back, when I got the other bill, they were like, "Oh, well, you must not have a major leak." Okay, so anyway, long story short, um, I remember back when we all got smart meters for our homes with electricity. And I'm all about smart. I shortcut everything. I'm paperless. And, and I know all my neighbors were real concerned about it. And so, I thought, "Well, I'm just gonna wait and see."
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Okay, when we got the smart meters for the electricity, and those got installed, my electric bill went down. And you know why it went down? Not only is it a smart meter, 'cause it works, it's also our responsibility to negotiate our rates on electricity. The water, we have no control over, other than voting each one of you, for you, and you, and you. And if, if we can't count on these people, and I do go out and vote, and I do encourage everyone to vote, and I think this has been a, a well-received meeting, and I, I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Can I say, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I, I was told to send in a leak form, and my repair bill, that I paid for the leak to get fixed, I did that. It took them ten days to get me the form, after I'd requested it, 'cause it's not online. Then when I finally get the form, they tell me to email the form. I emailed the form. And then, I, they, I called, they got it. That's ten more days. Then ten more days pass, and I call back to see if there's resolution. And they told me, "No." She was on the phone with someone in Halton City. Phantom was on the phone with somebody in Halton City chatting with her. And she was telling me all what was being said. And I said, I said, "So, they're not gonna reimburse me anything." I got a letter in the mail the other day, basically saying that, "Oh, you guys more money, but they're not gonna bill me for it."
Thank you. I would like...
One income family.
Thank you.
One person in my home.
I would like to invite Ms. Abby Lee Co- Corey.
Cody Gamble.
Cody Gamble. Would you please, Ms. Corey Gamble? Okay, the next one would be Francis Lopez. Francis Lopez.
Francis Lopez.
Lopez. If not, I would like to invite, the last one is Linda Ekin. Ekin. Linda, welcome ma'am. Microphone, please.
Well, I taught for thirty years, so I probably don't need the microphone. And I'm proud to say, I moved to Halton City because I worked for Birdville for those full thirty years. And I thought, "I wanted to live where I taught." I'm not happy about it now. Our bill went from ninety, roughly ninety-eight dollars a month. I'm sorry, I live at fifty-two eighty-one Dillon Circle. And we now are averaging over two hundred. We're not watering any more than we ever did before. We have a smart system, watering system. It does nine minutes. Then it goes back through the system to make sure that it's got enough moisture. If it is, it skips it. If not, it'll do four more minutes. No water wasting there. We covered an average of a third of our backyard in paving stones to make it wheelchair accessible. I have a third less yard, but I'm paying more money and supposedly using more water than I ever did. I average around twenty-one thousand gallons for my husband and I. We have low-flow toilets. We have the switch-offs on our showers now. We have high-efficiency washers. My dishwasher is the same. I don't do anything unless it's full. Which is one of the things they say on Fathom's website. Make sure your dishwasher is full. You do full loads of clothes. Everything. I checked it. We have rain barrels. I have four rain barrels. We catch as much water as we can that we use. I don't have any more plants or landscaping than I've always had. But yet, it says I'm using fifty-eight percent more water than I did last month. Well, last month, than last year. That's ridiculous. How can I be using more water? I know you're saying that the meters were bad, that they weren't reading correctly. But that can't be that much of a difference for two people. I called Fathom at the beginning. I was told that I had a leak. We checked everything. There were no leaks. Then I was told it was in my sprinkler system. It must be that, 'cause that's using a lot of water. I water two times a week, just like the city's always asked. Thursdays and Sundays. So I've stuck with that, even though we're not on the restrictions yet. That's all we ever water. I checked that. We paid five hundred dollars out to have our sprinkler system checked. Every single thing checked. There are no leaks. But according to Fathom...
Yeah, thirty seconds ma'am.
According to Fathom, I have leaks. I talked to them again. They said, "Well, if I wanna have my system checked, I was going to have to pay a field test. Fifteen dollars." And I said, "Okay, I wanna be there when they do it." And they said, "Fine. It takes at least forty-eight hours to schedule." I said, "Okay, we're going to be gone the next day for a spinal procedure for my husband. Do not come tomorrow. Come Friday." They came on Thursday, when I asked them not to come. They were there from seven fifty-two, 'cause my security system picked it up. They left at eight, uh, about eight twenty. Again, they did something at the meter. I couldn't see it because our pickup truck had it blocked. They talked around their truck for a while. They went back to the meter area. One guy, I heard it click shut. And that was it. I get a letter, less than fifty-two minutes after they did their field study, saying I used thirty-seven percent of my water usage in my yard. How would they even know that? That means my husband and I have water fights in our house. Using all the rest of that hundred percent every month. Spraying each other with water. Running through the house nilly-willy, according to your Fathom people. I have bills that have the same amount of water usage, forty gallons, for days on end. No peaks, no valleys. Forty gallons straight across for days. I have the same thing happen when he was in the hospital for two weeks. Water usage, when I was at the hospital with him. Again, unless my dog and cat are having fights in there with water, I don't know who's using it.
Ma'am, your time is over.
I appreciate the council's time.
Yes.
If you wanna see the bills, I copied them. I have the printouts from Fathom. I also don't appreciate Fathom saying that they would not do this when we were gone, that they would do it when we were there to see it. There's something wrong with our meter.
Yes ma'am, thank you ma'am, and, uh... At this time, I think the council, we heard the comment, complaint, and definitely our council and the Fathom representative, we should have a meeting or something to see what problem here, because most of the problem need to be investigated. Uh, just luckily for me, I've been, my bill one time is so high, and I almost slammed on Fathom, but my wife had a leak in the house. She didn't tell me. So, a couple hundred dollars I paid it. I'm lucky, but, uh, I, I didn't say the meter for my house is correct, but you are wrong. But this is, we take this issue seriously. And definitely, we try to do something to let the people at least satisfy with the new water system. And, uh, Mr. City Manager, you have anything to say, sir?
No, sir.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Could I ask one question? My question is, how many other companies were considered for this water system, for four Fathoms for water system? City Manager?
Yeah, Ms. Rec.
Yes, sir. We asked Fathom to, um, provide a service that no other company provides. And that's basically to replace the meters that were in the ground, to take over our utility billing, and also to set up a satellite office here. So there was no other companies that offered the services that we were requiring or asking for.
I worked for defense contract for thirty-six years, and we weren't allowed to do anything unless we had free quotes.
So, so, sir?
Yes, sir, that's...
So, if you want to talk, would you please go to the microphone, please, sir?
Yes, sir, the bidding process you were talking about, there's also a sole source exception to that.
May I have your name again, please?
My name is Mike Gory, and I live on fifty-four twelve Jerry Lane. By the way, I have a large puddle of water at the end of my street that never drains. As well as a light pole that never lights. I, I, I'm, I'm curious about that. Why we have a, a system in place that's obviously has a problem, that otherwise, these people wouldn't be here, right? Yet we constantly have to contact a company who obviously has no competition in this program, can do whatever they wanna do with a contract that no one else supplied for. I think you guys need to stop going in that room, and stop meeting out here. You know, I get this advice every time I pick up the phone. And the phone tells me, "Listen to the entire message, 'cause the options have changed." I think you gentlemen and ladies need to consider that. Listening to the entire message. We might be able to save a lot of money on this water system by going to less city councilmen.
Thank you. Are you on the list here, ma'am?
I got a question.
No, no, your, your time already done. Uh, let, uh, let the people hear.
I wasn't even up there.
Okay, ma'am. Are you Nancy McKee?
No, I'm Tammy Gillum. I was born and raised here in Halton City.
Are you, have your name on this list?
No, I don't. But I got a question for all of y'all. Are we paying for the water that is being ran at the Halton City Recreation Center? And are we paying for the, um, the baseball field that is being watered at six o'clock on the dot every morning? Because I'm one person, and my bill was, uh, my usage was eleven thousand gallons. And I don't use nothing but the shower. Explain to your fellow citizens here, why?
Well, right now, we don't know. We didn't see your bill and anything like this. But if you have problem, like I said, you can approach Ms. Rec, Phil, and Fathom, and we try to...
I do. I get no answer.
Ms. Phil, have you not met her before?
No, sir, I haven't. I haven't, I've not heard.
How many times you come to approach him, ma'am?
I've called Phantom, about four or five times.
No, no, you're talking about Ms. Phil here. Have you met him before?
No, I've never met him.
Okay, ma'am, why don't you try next time, would you please? To see how he can do for you.
All right.
Please, ma'am, thank you. Uh, we have two more person. We'll be, uh, the meeting will close. And, uh, the next time would be Nancy Mayer. Oh, I'm sorry. Nancy McKee. Not here? How about Donna Kaufman? Dana? Dana Kaufman. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, most of people writing this list, just like Doctor writing. Go ahead, ma'am. Welcome.
Well, try not to do that. Y'all know me, Dana Kaufman, thirty-five forty-eight Beverly Drive. Um, I'm not up here to gripe. I haven't been affected by the water, but I'm hoping it's not like Google, and I say it, it hears me, and all of a sudden, it's gonna start showing up on my bill. Um, my biggest things, actually, before I go into this, thank y'all for coming, but honestly, this needs to be the turnout for every council meeting. Okay? 'Cause that, that's really what needs to be happening. Um, I know the water needs to be, I mean, the grass needs to be watered and stuff, but my bigger thing is my foundation. I paid ten thousand dollars to get my foundation fixed in twenty sixteen, and I'm praying to God I don't have any more issues to have to pay that again. So that's one of my things in about doing the water. Um, ways to better the system? I do customer service for a living, and one of the biggest complaints is customer service. So maybe looking at the answers that they're giving, looking at the call recordings. They can do go-to meeting sessions with these people that are having trouble with the apps, with the websites. There's things that can be done there to improve that. Um, not the stealing solution. There's also ways that you can, um, explain the part about the charter. On that, it seems like several people may not have heard that. So I think a lot of quality assurance with the customer service would help a lot of this upfront, first and foremost. I've heard compliments about the ladies, you know, that are up there and prepared for abuse, but they're pretty nice when you approach them nicely. Hopefully, that's the case. I hadn't had to do that. Um, the other thing I heard that would be a number-one big fix would be the timestamp usage. I'm very well over programmed. Um, takes one little line of code to throw everything off. That's why these people are confused about three AM usage. Get the time fixed. Then they can really understand and know what's going on. That's a solution. Um, my other thing is, is I don't know, does the water pressure that happens on some of these streets, does that affect this in any way? I know when our street was redone, our pressure was reduced. We don't have quite the pressure we used to have. I know some of the other areas seem to have a higher pressure. Have no clue if that affects this. Something to look into. Um, last thing I have, which is a little...
Thirty seconds, yeah.
Is, um, from, from those that don't know, I'm the chair for the Parks and Rec Board. We haven't seen anything on our financial reports for the donation funds that are coming out of people's donations, that are their water bill, show up on any of our financial reports. I have been advised that that money is still with Fathom, trying to organize it and get it back over to us, so it can be in our funds. If that money is still sitting with Fathom, then that means the city is losing the interest that we would have sitting in our accounts. So I don't know if that's true. Jennifer can check that out, or whatever, find out. My concern is, has it been passed from Fathom over to here, made it into all the appropriate donation funds, so that we're dealing with it however we're supposed to be? Those are my two. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if any more question, we will go to the next meeting. Uh, I think it's too late for somebody. Have you sign up, sir?
No, but I've got a question.
No, sir? No, sir? It, no. You have to sign up? No, sir?
Taxes here and all that?
No, no. No, sir. If that's, you can request for the next town hall meeting, and we welcome you here again, okay? At this time, I, I would like to adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-five. Yeah, I...
Councilman? Thank you. I'd like to address, um, y'all, and to say thank y'all for being here. I know Mary asked what we're doing to help. Uh, myself, I can speak for myself. Um, based on the ordinances and what we have, I've been doing what I can. Um, I was on the Halton City Facebook page, the Halton City Water Bill. Um, recently, I've been taken off of that. Um, recently, I've been taken off of that for some reason, I do not know, as well as others have been taken off of that. Um, that was started back in June, I was taken off last Tuesday after y'all, the NBC Five interview. I was put back on yesterday by Carrie Jones, I appreciate him for that. But I looked this morning, um, to see if there's anything I can help with, because what I was doing, I was screenshotting the issues. Uh, there are several in here that know that, and I would get them to sit on our recs, as well as I'd be in their offices fixing these issues. Um, I don't know who took me off, but if they're here, I would appreciate it if you could put me back on, so I can continue to do what I was doing until we can address the issues that were, uh, before us tonight, thank you.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, Councilor Watkins want to say something to Ms. Phong? Go ahead, uh, sir. Okay, if, uh, if Councilor has no more comment, and I appreciate everyone kindness and professionalism, uh, in the meeting. Uh, we're looking for a next one, if there is a request from citizen to see what problem can be solved with Fathom. And thank you so much, the meeting adjourned at nine forty, thirty-five, thank you.